Had a quorum presence, so we're gonna go ahead at 6 o'clock, and we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's February 13th, 2023. We have two football players, names.
Aiden Murray.
And Diego Ariaga.
And they're gonna do the pledge for us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank y'all so much. All right, and Denise is gonna read our board mission statement.
To Los Alamos Independent School District, educates every student to be a lifelong learner, a person of integrity, and a positive contributor to society.
All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment, which is the time for members of the audience to address the Board of Trustees. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the Board's procedures for handling public comments. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of five minutes to address the Board, except that non-English speakers will be allowed a maximum of six minutes to address the Board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous, avoid using profanity, and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Yelling, inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. Lastly, we ask that you not discuss students who are not your own child. I also caution you that your public comments should not complain about individual school employees by name, or position, or other than your own child identify students. As presiding officer, I am obligated to determine whether a person addressing the Board has attempted to administratively resolve any complaints or grievances about which they want to address the Board that involve district officers or employees. In the event your comments constitutes a complaint or charge against an employee or officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the school's district's formal grievance procedures, or to have the item heard in executive session depending on the nature of the complaint. Any concerns or complaints regarding individual district employees, students, or parents must be resolved via the district's grievance process, which can be found online and include policies DGBA, FNG, and GF. Thank you, and our first speaker is Ms. Dixon.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Board. My name is Kira Dixon. I'm proud to see that I'm a third-generation Los Alamos Midway Warrior. Within the walls of our four campuses at TMISD, I have met some amazing people, learned many lifelong lessons, and found who I am and where I belong in this great big world. In August, I will be trading my maroon and gold for blue and orange as I was accepted into my top college state, Salem State University in Massachusetts. I come here today to ask you a favor, a favor from y'all, for the senior class. I would like to express my gratitude that the TM School District, unlike some of our neighboring schools, have a very lax dress code that allows our students to feel comfortable and express themselves in their own clothes. However, on graduation, the day that is set to celebrate us, our accomplishments, and our future, we are told that we may not decorate our caps. I understand that this rule has been set in place for quite some time, although the graduating class of 2020 was allowed to decorate their caps. I do understand that they had lost so much that year due to COVID-19. But my point is that whatever provisions were set seem to work, because as far as I know, there were no problems with vulgarity upon their caps. I brought with me two caps. I brought with me two caps today, poppers that represent me. I understand that there will be provisions and approvals needed, but I'm asking you all to consider allowing us to express who we are. For the past 12-plus years, many of my peers have given so much of themselves for this wonderful district. Many give up their evenings, weekends, and even intercessions for multiple co-curricular activities that help prove the excellence of TM. This is just one small privilege that we have worked so hard for and would be so much to so many. Thank you for your consideration.
Next, we have Dela Garza.
That's me, I'm sorry, that's my maiden name, Sofia Jimenez Dela Garza. I came over here just because a lot of people wants to know, you know, if you're not from here, who you are. You're not supposed to, you don't have rights. Dela Garza is my family's name. I'm not from here, I'm from Mexico, just like my ancestors. My family has been in Texas since Texas started. Direct descendant of Captain Blas Maria Dela Garza Falcon, which was the first resident in Wests County. For those that don't know, you can Google it. And I come over here just to ask support, support to the UIL, to the academics kids, who a lot of them are over here. I want equal support to them as we are, the equal support that we're giving to the sports, to the basketball, to the football, and the same amount maybe money that we spend. Because thanks to these kids, the UIL kids, the academic kids, we have a good grading statewide. Basically, these kids are the ones who are the top 20 in academics. And why? Because I know them, they have the number one, the number 10, the number 13 on their group. I want the same support for them because I see a lot of discrepancy. I don't see recognition, and that will help the kids keep, it will encourage the kids to keep working on what they're doing, on their place, on whatever they want to do. It will, it will give them a good sign that hey, the school cares. The school doesn't only care for the sports. The school cares for us. Because thanks to them, again, those are the kids who are the hard workers, who are the smart ones. We need support in the same way we do to the football players, if not more, I might say. That's my main, one of my main concerns. The other one is, I wanted to bring it up. I have, like you know, I'm also a kid with disability. I have ADHD, dyslexia. My youngest one has dyslexia too. All my kids have ADHD. So my daughter, she's in sixth grade. She just came in December, told me one of her classmates, she's barely starting getting those services. I said, "Why?" She, I'm, I said, "She's getting classes of science. She has eight teachers to keep up." She has science, math, she has choir, she has social studies, she has language and arts, et cetera. So she has eight teachers to keep up. I'm wondering how this kid, who I don't, a classmate of her, didn't got the help like she did, right? And we're coming back in January, and then she tells me just two weeks ago, "Hey Mom, this such-and-such, they're putting me with him to help him out reading because he's struggling." And she even questioned why he wasn't in my dyslexia class like the other kids. I was like, "I don't know, Mama, I don't know why. Why they keep passing him on and not, why he wasn't detected." I came over here, and I've been coming over and over as an advocate, because as someone who has a disability, my main concern is the kids. I'm not, I'm not asking for any for me or for my kids because I'll take care of them, but I'm asking for the other kids, for the other parents who don't voice the concern or they don't know that the school's supposed to help with those issues. So my main concern is for that. And the other issue that I wanted to bring up to you all too is the safety of kids on the middle school campus. There's kids being, I've been living over here 12 years. Fortunately, because I'm different, I pay attention every detail. And since my kid was in middle school, when he was living in choir trips at 6 o'clock in the morning, there was kids being dropping off. I waited until the bus left, 6:30, and there was kids being dropping off at 6:30 in the school. Sorry. So, and I wanted to see if we can establish a TM PM for those kids for liability purpose for the school. And that's all I want to tell you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and giving us their public comments. So we do appreciate people coming up Atlanta. So what you're thinking, so we appreciate y'all. All right, next on the agenda is why we all love to sit here, is recognition of some football players.
Madam President, members of the Board, we have Coach O'Neal here and our varsity football, if you'll join me so we can recognize these student, scholar athletes.
No, you talk about the team. Okay. Hello, everybody, it's great to see everybody here. When we talk about these group of kids, what I like to talk most about is what his doing and done to the community. These young men have invested. They've invested in themselves, in each other, in the program. And we talk about inclusion. At any Friday night football game, you will have no less than 400 students involved directly in the game. It's an event, it's a beautiful event. We have people that do all walks. We are missing maybe 2/3 of our team because they're doing something else, whether it's basketball, soccer, they're doing other things. We are here to grow young men and women up in the way they should go. That's what we do, is we train people and send them on to life that we know is hard. Okay, but people here can love them and get them ready to do something else. They have invested in each other. The statistics I normally give are team statistics. Okay? We did surpass all of our statistics from the previous year, but they did something very, very few people have done. Since 1947, TM has gone to the playoffs a total of four times, including this group right here. So you're talking about people who have done things that are unusual. They have given an unusual commitment because they're gonna be unusual young men and women out in the future. And I'm a parent, I have three kids of my own. One's married and off, one is in the middle of it, and one's about to graduate. The best thing we can do is love them to adversity. And that's what we do. It's hard because we want them to do something great somewhere else. And these young men are gonna be able to do that. Thank you, guys.
Okay, you wanna call them now?
I do.
If you could, once you get your certificate, if you could go around and shake hands with the trustees. Okay? Number three, just one. Parents, if you're out there or in here, don't hesitate to come in, take a picture. We'll slow play this, we're making some memories tonight. So we're not in any hurry, okay?
Yes, sir. Pedro Alvarez.
Share stories about them as they go.
Yeah, why don't y'all come around here?
I'd like to know who everyone supported in the Super Bowl last night.
We don't have that much time.
Chiefs or Eagles, simple answer.
Cowboys.
Right behind Leo. All right, all right, get in there. All right, here we go, one, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, number seven, Landon Hasso. And I can tell you now, I could say something about every one of them with no notes because they're those kind of kids. So good job, everybody.
All right, let's get a picture.
Here we go.
Bye-bye.
Okay, number 12, Anthony Reyes. I can talk about some things, and I'll not be super personal, but some of the things that is most difficult for them is to stand up in front of a group of people. We think that's essential, and we do that in a supportive way. And this young man, there's a few others, will be on the Leadership Council for next year. And we think he's gonna be a great job at it.
Leo, can you move over a little bit? There you go.
He's also super smart, he fixed all my computers over the... All those Chromebooks that the kids messed up. He's a real MVP.
All right, number 15, Jaden Gutierrez. And I can talk in generalities. Every sophomore that was able to play varsity football were kids that never missed. They found extra. They understood that they wanted to invest that way, and he was one of those kids.
Here we go. You said you were a sophomore?
Number 17, Rolando Solis.
He's got the Super Bowl shirt on. Yeah, go for it, I see it early. There we go.
Number 23, Jeremina Garza.
Oh, Leo, good break, there we go. Can I get you on this side? Because I...
Because I'm near you, but Chris is not.
Okay, here we go, perfect.
Thank you.
What grade are you in?
Uh, junior.
Junior.
Another one of our sophomores, number 33, Josiah Carrillo. Any words out of his mouth are, "Yes, sir." That's never wrong. It's a hard-working machine. Okay? Change of sir. Number 40, Joseph Tames. Okay, number 50, JD Flores.
And he's one of our best volunteers too.
Yes, he is. We can get into volunteers, this group does a great job with that. Next on the list is number 51, Peyton Burnett.
Okay, Mr. Ramby, is there enough to speak for this? There we go. One, two, three.
I would say one of our greatest examples of a selfless leader played defensive end at that size. And he was one of the bad ones, period, across the board. Number 52, Aiden Murray.
He also won a special, we're at the Sports Bank...
Yes, we did. So that, selflessness. Yes, actor. Number 56, Adam Alvarez. Another sophomore. Another performer who just outplayed by sheer will, 57, Jaden Kemp. One of our, one of our best leaders. On film, one of the best things you can do is, you couldn't tell if it was the first or fourth quarter because his level of play didn't change. And really proud of him for that, Diego Ariaga. Another one of our sophomore, another one of our sophomores who is dedicated to preparation, played himself into being great, John Burdick.
I'm gonna have the board members step to the side here, and then we'll kind of plug y'all in. If y'all stand by, just be careful. Very tall.
All taller than me, all J. B. N.
Get the taller, taller ones in the back. You can see everybody looking at me, I can see everybody's face. Okay, now we'll get our board members to come around here. I think I'll be okay in the front. I want it back right. All right, I'm gonna have to stand for this. Here we go. You can, just make sure it's the right side up. All right, here we go. One, two, three. Okay, I gotta step back. See, if yours is good, I'm just gonna steal it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Coach, we appreciate you, man.
Just to get in with them?
Wasn't playing in 1947 when they...
Oh, sure. Yeah, I never get in pictures.
Here, y'all wanna go over there, we'll get a picture with them all too.
Sir, you go down? Yes, sir. Before I leave, I wanna make sure, do you understand what the coaches do? Some of you are coaches, wives. It's no less, and I kid you, it's no less than 100 hours a week. Coaches!
We've got more...
Can I take three minutes? Thank you, Coach.
Get your little faces in here. The men that are serving are serving, and they wouldn't be on the staff if they weren't. When, when I was hired two years ago, that was the number one question, is what kind of character was gonna be brought? Okay? We're here to grow young men and women to be great somewhere else, to train each athlete up in the way they should go, so they don't just survive, but they thrive in an ever-changing world. That's, that's the long tagline that says, "We want them to do hard things here so they can do hard things somewhere else." And during football season, it's no less than 100 hours a week per person. And that's what it takes, that's what it takes. And your kids in this community is worth it. So I just wanna make sure that they get a little bit of credit because they deserve it, and I'm very thankful.
We always love celebrating those kids. That's what it's all about. Our next discussion is a report on the campus performance data.
Madam President, members of the Board, this is a really important presentation that our curriculum and instruction people and campus leadership have been working on. They've got some really critical data to report to you. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. White.
Thank you, Dr. Van Matri. Members of the Board, audience, good evening. As Mr. Van Matri was stating, we have a very critical presentation to provide you all tonight as an update on the middle of the year and our progress on what we've been working on as far as, well, maybe not my voice. So maybe I'll just kind of get to the point here, so you don't have to listen to what my voice sounds like. But just to set the stage for our Curriculum Instruction Department, who's gonna take you through our presentation, that each of our campus principals will also contribute as we get to their campus. So we have tonight Dr. Shong, who's our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, as well as our Assistant Director of Curriculum Instruction, Kenan Moody. And with that said, what we're wanting to do is to highlight the third component of our department, which is assessment. We've talked a lot this year about the written curriculum. One thing Mr. Van Matri brought to us was the initiative to review our entire curriculum. And one process he has asked us to go through this year was a curriculum audit. And we will talk a little bit more about that as relates to assessment, but that kind of covered our first task, which was to address the written curriculum through the curriculum audit. The second task was to talk about the taught curriculum. So as we look at what we write and what we're gonna do, then it becomes a matter of how we're gonna teach it and what are we gonna do differently. And through that process, another initiative Mr. Van Matri brought was the ORS process, which directly relates to the administrators and building our instructional leadership capacity. And so as we have gone through that process, we have learned a multitude of best practices and just strategies on just what we really need to be looking at as far as evaluating and coaching and growing teachers, which leads us into the third component, which is the, how do we assess the curriculum? How do we evaluate what it is we're doing in order to better understand how we can better provide that instruction, as I just said? So tonight, the presentation is about our assessment, how we are talking about the different types of assessment that we provide specifically about formative versus summative, which was covered a bit in the cover letter to this presentation. But what's gonna happen now is Dr. Shong's gonna take it over, and she's gonna talk a little bit more about what formative and summative assessments look like in our district, and how those percentages and those reports look at each of our campuses. Do you mind turning me back on over here? Turn me back on over here.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm super excited to present today on the middle of the year update on our assessment. So I'm gonna walk you through the presentation, there's a couple of slides I'm going to be discussing, and then I will be passing it over to our principals and our administrators. So, to kick it off, like Dr. White was saying, one of the areas that we're focusing on tonight is assessment, and that's part of one of our initiatives that we really wanted to look at. And so just to kinda start this off, when we're looking at different types of assessment, assessments, we're looking at summative assessments, and then we're also looking at formative assessments. So the difference between the two, when you're looking at summative assessments, we have the national ACT, PSAT, SAT, TSI, and the ASVAB. And then, of course, we have our statewide, which is our STAR, Telpass, and the Fitness Gram, and the district-wide, which is Math at Anarom, and these two are really the data that we're gonna be looking at tonight, this is what we're gonna be reporting on. And then, of course, we have program-specific data or assessments, which is bilingual, dyslexia, gifted, and talented. And those types of assessments, they have to meet eligibility, there's a criteria that they have to meet in order to test in those areas. And then when you're looking at formative assessment, we're looking at district-wide. We're looking at T-FAR and T-TAP, and these are both online platforms. The T-FAR is something that our students are taking this year for the first time, and those are called AT-THAT opportunities, which is aligned to the new STAR, the 2.0, the redesigning of the STAR. And so we wanna make sure that our students have multiple opportunities to, to access the T-FAR. Another one is called the T-TAP, and we are, I think we're like the only one in Region Two that is a part of this pilot. And that test is only given for fifth graders, sixth graders and seventh grade will test the math, and then eighth graders, I believe, test social studies. So, and then, of course, one of the most important ones is classroom formative assessment. That is what drives our instructions, that's the type of conversations that our, our teachers have to determine what instructional strategies need to, what moves do we need to make in our curriculum so that we can make our kids move forward. And so I just wanna mention, a couple of things that we've brought this year, new to the district, is the PSAT. In the past, we've offered that at the high school, but this year, we are going to be offering the PSAT to eighth graders. So we're gonna get them started earlier. And then another initiative that we've pushed is the TSI. The eighth graders will have an opportunity, I believe in May, to, to take the TSI. So we, we've already established the middle school as an onsite campus to administer those two assessments. So we're very excited about offering those two additional assessments to, to the district. And so like Dr. White was stating, you know, creating a new department, CNI, you know, there's different areas. And one of the areas that we really wanted to focus on was assessment, and really creating those goals. And one thing that was very important for us is that we wanted to create transparency. In addition to that, we also wanted to create systems that were aligned K-12. And so one of the first goal was to create a district assessment framework, and I have examples after this. The second goal was to establish an aligned assessment system. And the third goal was to conduct academic data meetings. So I'm gonna walk you through the next slide. So here, goal number one, create a district assessment framework. And you should have a handout. Dr. White's gonna pass that out. And what we wanted to do here is in addition to creating transparency, in addition to creating an alignment, K-12, we also wanted to make sure that we had a common language, K-12. And so what we did, CNI department created this document, and so it describes the different types of assessments, it talks about expectation of each assessment, it defines the purpose, and then also it talks about whether this is a grade that you enter or that you don't enter, because that was a conversation too. When do you enter a grade and when don't you? And so throughout the school year, some of the administrators shared this document with their campus, and then also CNI, we had an opportunity to go to the campus and share this document. And so we had an opportunity to talk to teachers to clarify any, you know, anything that they had, it was an opportunity for us just to kinda get feedback on them, and so we went through this entire document just to kinda set the stage. And so that was shared with everyone throughout the district. The second goal was to establish an aligned assessment calendar. You also have that artifact in your, in your packet, and so what we did, by campus, by every grade level, we had, we established a calendar. And the calendar designates all of the testing dates, it designates every type of assessment that that particular grade level will take. And so that was also shared district-wide. In addition, we also have a district-wide calendar that was also shared, and that one was just K through 12, by date, five months, and it just kind of listed all of the different assessments that we have throughout the year. And so that one you don't have, but we do have a copy of that in this particular slide. And then the third goal, so we have all this data, you know, our, our teachers are doing a phenomenal job teaching our students, our campus administrators are doing a phenomenal job, you know, looking at the data, you know, making those changes, you know, to support our teachers, to support our students, and they're having those very meaningful conversations on their campus, but the district also wanted to participate in those conversations. So we set up academic data meetings. And so this is kinda like a follow-up, when we met with you guys, we talked about how we were going to set up those academic meetings, so we, we've conducted those meetings, and so when we, when we met with every single campus, we presented this agenda template. So it kinda goes over, the first thing we did was we reviewed the data. The second thing, we gave the campus an opportunity to reflect on that data. And I think one of the most important questions was number three, or number four, what supports at the district level can we provide to our campuses? How can we help our teachers? How can we help our students? We see ourselves as, we're here to provide that service to them. And so I took one of the most important questions out of this entire, I mean, yes, the data was important, but we wanna know, what do you need from us so that we can support you, so we can support that student growth in our district? Okay, so, I'm gonna set the stage, like I said, our campus administrators have done a wonderful job, so now they're gonna take over, and every campus principal will have an opportunity to share their data and kinda look deeper into their data and then highlight some of their strengths.
May I have a, answer a question? Can I have you answer a question for me? You said eighth graders are gonna take TSI?
Yes.
Is that a practice TSI? Because the mathematics part of that TSI is difficult, so is that just a practice TSI?
It's gonna, actually, if they take the TSI, it's gonna, it's gonna give them, if they don't pass it, the benefits of not passing it, I'll tell you, it's gonna give them a diagnostic report. And so the benefit of having that diagnostic report is like when they go to the high school, they're gonna have that information, so they're gonna be able to look at that diagnostic report, and they're gonna be able to identify what, what areas they need to work on and what areas, you know, they're, they're, they're strong at. So if they don't pass it, it's still great practice, because it's gonna identify those needs. And so I know at the high school, they have a, the TSI prep, and so that's something that could go up with them as ninth graders, and if they have a TSI prep class, that could be something that that kid just works on, for tutoring, he needs to know this, so they can just kinda use that as a, like a guiding tool to help that kid be successful when he does have that other opportunity to take the TSI. And another thing with the TSI, they have multiple opportunities. So, like I said, the goal is, we wanna get them started, because we want to give them that jumpstart in their education, and so, you know, the more opportunities they have, I think we're, we're doing something good for them.
The other thing is that Coastal Bend College requires them to attempt the TSI before they let them in to the program, so they need to complete that in order to join Warpath Academy. And we, some of our automotive kids, welding kids, start their freshman year, so even if they fail it, the attempt is there, and that's Coastal Bend's requirement.
And I think for some of the programs, they don't, they can meet a certain score and still get into some of those courses, so they don't have to make like that 351 in math, they can still get in. I'm passing on to Laura Duff.
Good evening, everyone, and I think I speak for all the principals when, when I say that it's always a great opportunity to come out and highlight all the amazing things that are going on under campus. So I'm gonna review the data from our campus, and this is gonna be one test that we're gonna be looking at, and it's the NWA map testing, and it is, it is given at the beginning, middle, and end of each year. So we're gonna go over beginning and middle, end of year data.
Before you do the data, can you introduce your?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I do have my two instructional facilitators, they are key in ensuring that this happens on my campus. I have Angela Hess, and she helps with reading, and I have Crystal Bussman, who is our math instructional facilitator. They have been at my campus for two years, and it is just an amazing help to have two people strictly devoted to instruction to be able to help us and our teachers. So we're gonna look at the data, and we're gonna look at the red data is gonna be the beginning of year data, the blue data is gonna be middle of year. Now, if you can see, we have, have had extreme growth just from the beginning of year to the middle of the year. And, this is the map data, so in kindergarten, our students started at a 143, and currently they're at a 154, and that is what the, the national average is. And so if you can see, and I'm gonna just highlight this one right here, first grade, at the beginning of year, they're at 158, right now they're at 168, which is very close to where second grade started at the beginning of the year. So that is tremendous growth that we're seeing at our campus instructionally, in both reading and math. It's, you can see, see the same for here, so 149 and 153, our students are very close, and it's only the middle of the year. This assessment was given in December, okay? So we gave it in August, and then we give it in December, and then we will give it again in April, May, last week of April and May.
What's the, the national average for each of the?
Well, and we go to the next slide, and I don't know, I don't think we have the national averages for mine, but I will show you that this was a number of students tested in Kinder, okay? They met the target, so out of those, 199, 127 met targeted growth predictions, okay? It doesn't mean that the other 70 students did not show growth. They showed growth, but it was not the national, the predicted average for those students. So more than half of our students, 64% of our students showed growth.
And the, the target is based on a national average, or based on when they enter the next grade?
The national average.
Okay.
And so in first grade, we also had 222, 123, 55%. Now, when we had the training with the NWA map, they wanted to make sure that we knew that 50 was about where we wanted to see, that's showing us that we're on, but we've surpassed that in most grade levels except one. And the reason why first grade, you see that it's not at 50% or higher, it's because those students came to us very strong. Remember, these were kindergartners who were in school all last year, who did not have any interruptions in their learning. But they still had growth, and they are still continuing to grow. But if you think of STAR data, you also have to remember that keeping up with that growth, when you're already growing so much, it's, it's hard to do, but our students are right on target. If we would've compared to this to last year's data, we were in the twenties, okay? So we are showing significant growth. Now, we did divide this into three areas, student support, teacher support, and next steps. A couple of things that we are doing, we are targeting differentiation instruction based on students' needs. Now, you're probably asking, how do you do that? You have about 900 students. We use this data to directly target MTSS interventions. MTSS is what we use to identify students' weaknesses and intervene for every student. Every student has a prescription geared towards them based on their data. It targets foundational skills, and it's done every grading period. I have my two instructional facilitators along with my counselors, and they're involved in that process, and meeting with teachers who bring in their data, we look at it and find out, okay, what is it that these students need to be successful? And we're targeting them on their levels. We set parameters to ensure there's a controlled testing environment, we wanna make sure that we are preparing our students for testing. We are using AMIRA, and before you ask what AMIRA is, AMIRA is from the Dell Foundation, and it is a virtual tutor for our students. It's an artificial intelligent, intelligent reading tutor that's, that's there, and the kids are reading into the computer, and this person is doing, interacting with our students, so that's very interesting to see. And it's, it supports enrichment of student reading, reading fluency. Moving on to teacher support, we have provided embedded professional development all year long. Every, I would say every six weeks, we have two consultants that come in during the school day to help our teachers with professional, professional development. All my teachers have been receiving professional development in both reading, that is focused on the, the balanced literacy framework, but using the science of T2 reading in there. And then also guided math, which is, those are frameworks where teachers work with students in small groups to make sure that that instruction is getting to those students, and they're able to quickly facilitate as needed. We do vertical planning, PLC, based on knowledge of TEES instruction and student data. We do work closely with the intermediate to ensure that second grade and third grade get those crucial talks to talk about where our students are, what our needs are. If you, if you would ever attend, they would be like, we're talking about the in-depth TEES, like what are we teaching in second grade that builds a foundation for third grade? The next one is data digs. Now, this is where they said we do have our data meetings, and we do meet with our teachers after every big summative assessment, but also during, to make sure that our teachers are currently looking at that data and making sure that they are using that to drive instruction. The next one is utilizing, implementing TEES and guides to help with alignment. We are using TEES resource system, and our teachers have become very fluent in knowing their TEES and the standards that need to be taught. Where do we go from here? What are our next steps? Well, we're gonna continue with vertical planning, of course, continue with our professional development, and we do have curriculum planning days for teachers to collaborate. We want to increase the rigor, to increase that student growth, and second grade will be starting online testing to get them ready for STAR 2.0.
Any questions, comments, observations?
I love data, I'm data-driven. Not now, but I would be very interested to see, I guess, where we compare to the national average at the end of this year, and then next year, to show how much of an impact AMIRA and just having a CNI department did for Tulisum anyway.
Which was key, why we established the framework, so that it's consistent, and we can have those comparisons across the years.
I have been in the district nine years, and this is the first time we were all speaking the same language, and we were all talking the same language, and it's gonna be very noticeable in the data that they share with you today. We made our curriculum and instruction, team is on our campus constantly, they're communicating with the principals, they're communicating with our IFs, and they're making sure that everything is set, just ready for us to be able to implement, so. It hasn't, it's been easy, because we have had the addition of the CNI department.
This is the first year we've used the AMIRA platform?
Yes, sir, it's one of the, another initiative that Mr. Van Matri brought to the district.
The Dell Foundation, and where there were only two schools in the state who received the grant, and we were able to provide that for our primary and intermediate students.
That's really nice, 'cause that takes a load off the parents at home. I mean, parents like to read with their kids, but the, the reading that the kids have to do for the long period of time on it, every single night, it can be a whole lot for a parent that may not even be at home, so I think it's awesome, and to see the improvement of our students is amazing, 'cause we're closing that gap.
So surprised that our first graders were like, what, this avatar is listening to me and will respond to me? They were a little weirded out. And you would, you would see them there, and they're yelling at AMIRA, we're like, she can hear you, you don't have to yell at her, so. It's been really, it's been a learning curve for our students, but that is the way we're moving, and it's, it helps the teachers have that person who gives them immediate feedback to correct that, so. It records them, and it'll, it'll show them a sample of the map, and it'll be like, book, say, book, and then the kids repeat it, and then they hear themselves say it, so. It's really.
You're still short on headphones?
Yes.
For that program?
Yes.
How many?
Probably, I think we only have 400. And we probably need, for two grade levels, we need 600.
We purchased tomorrow another 400, which is about $5,300 worth. We're still looking for the quote on the, I was calling them mouses. But I think, well, I know we have the revenue, the funds, to support what they need. And we get a really good idea of what they need when we have these data meetings because they're not bashful about asking for stuff.
Great job. Thank you.
All right. Well, it's good to be back because that way you can kind of see the process. I know we talked once before. So I would like to start by introducing my instructional facilitators. I have Ms. Naomi Davis Gonzalez. She's been with us for a little bit, but she's already jumped in and made an impact. And then I have Monica Franco, who is my other instructional facilitator. And I have to stress, like, the school would not function the same without these ladies. They have made such a huge impact on student achievement and supporting instruction on our campus. So I see that positive change coming. Okay, so like Ms. Thabila said, you're going to see that as an elementary, our slides are kind of formatted the same. So that way you can see what our data looks like. Our students as well take the MAP test. They take it beginning, middle, and end of year. And you'll see our, I'll start with our math, and we have growth. Now, I know that she mentioned also that as you go up, you're going to see that growth, it's going to be less and less. And ours directly so because they kind of started out where, not too far behind. So, but they are still growing, and that's what we want. So we are pretty much on track. We saw the biggest growth in our third graders because they had more to grow. But we were very pleased to see that they've already made, in our time, which we've been how many months in school, already a year's worth of growth. So it's been amazing to see that happen. And I think you'll be interested in the next slide because I know you said you love data. I love data too. And so you'll see that we actually have added the national norm averages on our slide. In our third grade, you can see how many students were tested, how many met their target, and what our average is compared to that national norm across both reading and math for grades three, four, five. So we feel really good that we are either above that national norm average or right at there. So we are, we're chugging along. We're working hard. Our kids are growing. And that's all based on a lot of the work that goes on behind the scenes. So, but just be confident to know that we are, we're working hard. We had a lot of pressure when that A was stamped on us. And we are like, that's a lot of pressure because we have to, we want to do good, you know? And we're competitive, and we want our kids to be successful, and our teachers are too. So we're working hard, but are, any questions on this?
And that national norm, is that where, I guess, like a fourth grade student should be? And like, was in 2019, pre-COVID? Or that's the national norm, like this year, learning loss?
For now. You have the national norms as of 2020 of January. So this is before COVID even. Current.
Okay.
Yeah.
2020.
2020.
Pre-COVID.
Awesome, awesome.
Which is even more impressive.
Yes.
I know.
Okay, so.
Don't forget.
Our next slide is broken up into our student, teacher, and what we're doing next. So to continue supporting our students, our MTSS process, when I first, it's my third year there, we just dove in headfirst. So we're kind of in year three of our MTSS data meetings. So every six weeks, my instructional facilitators, along with our counselors, they go through every single student. They diagnose, they put in plans, we give interventions. And I'm happy to say that we've actually been able to dismiss some because the teachers are learning how to look at data and how to not just blanket, you know, prescribe an instructional strategy. No, we're looking at specific needs and targeting those so that way we can have the most growth with our kiddos. Though, that's directly linked to our win times. So our master schedule allows for an hour block every day. An hour block every day to where teachers can do small group. Because what we found during this whole process is that that's what works. When you have your kids in small groups, you get to know your kids. You get to hear them read. You are able to work with them. That's also a good time when we found out, you know, we have so many kids who have different needs. That's the time when we can also support enrichment. You know, we've got a lot of kids with a lot of skills that maybe they don't need intervention. Maybe they need to be, you know, excelled and pushed. So we are, we've looked at that too. Online testing exposure and practice. I can tell you right now, our fifth graders are pros. Like, they've got a couple of years under their belt. You go in, you see that first testing session when fifth graders are, and it looks different than third. But we expect that. It's their first testing experience. So we've got plans in place to support third grade. Because you know what? They're going to get confused with, they get sidelined with all of the accommodations. The highlighter, and they want to highlight the whole paragraph. So it's our job to teach them how to be a good tester. Because that's a skill. It's a skill to be a good tester. And then our individualized instruction support, along with AMIRA. We were awarded it for our third graders. But oh my gosh, the teachers loved it, the kids loved it. And so we ended up going ahead and bringing it onboard for our fourth and fifth because reading is through everything. And we really found that it provided good data. And like, I know Ms. Thabila was saying, how kind of, it'll actually, let's say you have an articulation speech issue. It gets to know you, and it will detect that, it knows that student and how they're speaking. And so it's going to accommodate for that and understand. And it's not going to impact the comprehension or the fluency aspect of that because it gets to actually know that student, which is an amazing feature of it. And another thing that we have, it's our parent-directed tutoring. That was also awarded to us, and that was for our fourth and fifth math. We selected students based on where we felt we could have the most growth with them. And we look through everything from attendance. Are they kids that are here every day? Because we want to make sure that we're making the biggest impact. And then also, we are on our year two of our guided reading and guided math, which that structure, again, it's pulling kids and teaching them in small groups. Our teacher support is that we have ongoing PD throughout the year. It's not like those beginning-of-the-year PD days, and it's like one and done. Our PD, it's embedded throughout the whole year. And that way, it's modeling, teaching, supporting, and growing teachers throughout the year. And all of our current research-based resources provided. And those are all, like I said, our IFs are, like a little nickname that I think Mr. Van Maitre put on them, the IFs. So now it's kind of stuck. Our IFs are instrumental in that because they are truly a support for our teachers. And our next step, we have chosen as a campus to adopt the HQIM for our math and reading. So we're already looking into that to see what we need to do to prepare for next year so we can hit the ground running, training materials, all of that. And we're going to continue the involvement of our GTE program in our STEAM lab, which has just been amazing. I got to see today, they were doing coding and with little robots. And the kids were just, I mean, loving it. It's amazing to see what they can do at that level. And I think that's about it. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Questions, comments, observations?
Sure. Go on. Nope. How excited are you to get, I don't know, second graders with more and more data than you were receiving them before to see where their gaps are?
You have no idea. Because it really gives us a better idea when they're coming up, exactly what their needs are. And it's not like we're going in blind. We already have something that's aligned to what we're doing. So it really helps when we're aligned. So this data, we can look at it, and we, our teachers actually know how to understand and read it. So it's nice.
And the AMIRA program follows their profile even through school changes, right? Because it's.
I believe so, because it's our district account.
It's based on the seat of the students. So wherever that student is, that's where AMIRA goes.
Do we, how is development created? Is that just through the consultants? Or do we get teacher feedback? I mean, are we?
On what process? I'm sorry.
The, for the teachers, right? You have the professional development?
Oh, yes, yes.
So we're getting teacher feedback? We're not just feeding them what we say they need, right?
We, we have to have their buy-in. So with everything, we put surveys, we talk, we meet our campus-based decision-making, our leads, they're very involved. So, yes.
Paul, how to put it?
I'll just, most of us answered. A lot of it's through the vertical alignment between the primary and intermediate, which is very important, like what Denise was talking about. Second graders into the third grade. Because third grade is very important. It's a transitional year for a lot of students, in fact, most of them. And that's a good thing that you can see the growth in what they've acquired and what they have learned. And give them a basis to get them ready for the fifth grade. It's a remarkable instrument.
The state, the state gives us, what, Philip? A little over half a million a year in the early childhood? And that, that funding is to ensure that when they hit third grade, they're reading to learn. So the primary campus then makes the local decisions on what's the best use of that funding? Do they want more teachers? Do they want more resources? Do they want paraprofessionals? Or a combination of all three?
What, what fund is that?
Early childhood.
It's early education.
Early education. Part of HB3.
It's based on our AD and AD4, pre-K through third grade kids. That's what, or kinder, that's what drives our.
And 100% of that has to be spent.
Spent.
So I grew up in the generation of no child left behind. And this definitely individualizes where I see each individual student being able to be successful instead of just this blanket of no child left behind. Because now you get, you look around and you see that there were children left behind. So this program, these programs are amazing. And allowing each child to progress at what level they're at. So that's awesome.
The parent-directed tutoring, Dell gave us 150,000. And the campuses rolled out options for parents from TEA-approved tutoring vendors. And we gave them two options. And so the, I know there's a push for more parental rights. And that's certainly allowing the parents to have more of a say-so than maybe they have in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Melanie Adias, I'm the principal at the middle school. And I have my team here. I have Annalisa Wood, who is my instructional facilitator in math. And I have Linda Monales, who is my instructional facilitator for BD. And I have Connie Tierney, that helps us with the data, curriculum, and testing. Okay, before I get started, I'm going to pass this out because this is going to kind of guide you and help you as we go through to kind of better understand the data. So here you go.
Thank you.
So on the first side, you'll see the cut points. And that is subject to change. So if you go across and you take a look, actually, we'll start with the bottom. Because the bottom says approaches meets the masters. So when your kids get, A, come home with a report, it'll say, hey, your kid is at the approaches level. Or your kid is at the masters level. So what we did was, is we put it on a sheet so that way you would be familiar with what that means. Okay? We also highlighted, if you look there, it says approaches likely to succeed in the next grade or course with targeted academic interventions. If they are at the meets, a high likelihood of success in the next grade or course, but may still need some short-term targeted academic intervention. And then you have at the masters level. So you can take a look at that. That'll help you as we walk through the data. If you go through the top, you look at reading on this resource sheet. And it tells you, okay, sixth grade reading, in order to get to the approaches level, 55% is what you need. So the masters, 75%, and masters to the 85%. So on and so forth. This kind of helps you, guides you as we go through these numbers. Turn it over. On the backside, we are talking about two different types of assessments that we are utilizing at the middle school. You'll hear it referred to as at fact, which is opportunities. These are two opportunities that we have actually taken advantage of at the middle school. So if you look, we have the STAR interim assessment. And it tells you basically that it's given twice a year, November and February. Okay, what is the purpose? It pretty much tells us how students are going to do on the STAR, on the actual STAR test. Then we have the pilot, Texas Through Year Assessment Pilot, three times out of the year. That is something that we opted into, as was mentioned before, in sixth and seventh grade math and in social studies. So knowing that, here is the data. We had the students take the assessment in December, latter part of November, early December. And these are the results. So we have the approaches, which if you go back to your sheet, tells you where, what that means. We were at 79%. We were, if you notice the green, we were 7% above the region. Sixth grade math, we were 1% above the region. So on and so forth. Seventh grade reading interim, we were at 80%. At the approaches level, we were two points above the region. Okay? So if you take a look at that, that's pretty good considering that that was in November, first part of December. So not all, it's important to note that not all the TEES were covered at that point. So they test the students on all the content. So that's pretty good. So we're headed in the right direction. And if those of you know our history at the middle school, we're slowly making progress, which is a good thing. Okay?
I'm sorry, what was, I remember in the first presentation, like, when I first started, y'all had goals of how much percentage you wanted in each of them? Each of the buckets? What are those?
The goal to score is 90, 60, 30? We hope to aim to 90, 60, 30.
Okay, got it.
Okay, next one. Okay, so here's the data. And this is actually, it should say interim performance because we haven't seen the growth because we haven't taken the second one. Or actually, we're in the process of finalizing those reports. So this is actually performance. Okay, this is where we're at. We had 245 students tested math. 145 were at the approaches level. Seventh grade math, 256 students tested. 111 were at the approaches level. And in eighth grade, we had 221 students test. 122 were at the approaches level. Which is pretty good considering, like I said, not all the TEES have been covered. And if you're a math teacher, you know you haven't hit everything. I was a math teacher, and it always worried me during December because I hadn't tested, I hadn't covered everything. But it's a good tool to use. In eighth grade in Algebra I, those students that are enrolled in Algebra I, 39 tested, 37 scored at the approaches. That's awesome. We even had seven in the masters already at December time. Reading, math has always been a struggle, but we're making progress. Reading, if you notice in reading, 241 students tested, and 190 were already at the approaches. 118 are at the meets. In seventh grade reading, 253. We have 202 at the approaches and 115 at the meets. And look at the masters. That's awesome. We have students already performing at the masters level. In eighth grade, 256. We had 202 at the approaches, 123 at the meets, and 67 in the masters. When we go back to that first slide, there was a lot of green. I forgot to point that out. There's a lot of green because we are above the region, which is awesome on this slide here. Notice the green, we're above the region in those areas. So it is good to take note of that. Go to the last one. Okay, what is our plan of action moving forward? So if you notice, how are we going to support students? We have targeted instruction based on students' needs to ensure the TEES mastery provided during class. That's provided during class time two days a week. So we have teachers pulling out students. Those that did not meet the approaches are pulling them in from their electives. We also provide after-school tutorials on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. So parents, if you're in here, take note of that. Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, these are tutorials. We provide bus transportation and a meal, so get your kids here. We also have MTSS RTI learning plans, targeting foundational skills. They're reviewed every grading period. That's actually something we've gotten a little stronger at. In the beginning, it was kind of, we were kind of all over the place. In the beginning, it was kind of, we were kind of all over the place. But I think as we've gone along, we've kind of refined our process. We provide learning labs Monday through Friday. That has been a practice that has been going on since I got there. So basically, what it is, any student that did not perform at the approaches level, who failed, will have a learning lab in math or reading. And that's every day. We also have the online testing in DMAC for core subjects that is aligned with the STAR 2.0 test questions. One thing I can say, that when we got to the campus about three years ago, we started using DMAC. We're already using it intermediate, middle school's a little, we, we got them on board, and we've been utilizing the DMAC online testing platform, which is great. How are we supporting our teachers? We actually had, first semester, we had math support provided by Dr. Shannon Yandel. If you are a student here, she was a math teacher here, math department head many years ago. She actually specializes in math. She actually visited with our teachers. She evaluated them, gave them some feedback. She also took them on teaching and learning tours. What that means is she took some teachers to go see the other math teachers, to kind of see what everybody was going through, which is an awesome, excellent strategy. Instructional planning every other week with the triads and the instructional facilitators. So our teachers are meeting with our instructional facilitators to get feedback on lesson planning, whatever it is that they need. We also provide PD ongoing, but most, in particular, we did focus on learning objectives and bell ringers for the core teachers and exit tickets. When I talk about bell ringers, it's a warm-up. We're spiraling in those, those TEES. And exit ticket, on the way out, are we asking students, hey, what did you learn today? Let's review. So we're focusing on those things. We also utilize implementing the TEES resource system and the text guides to help with alignment and instructional planning. Those guides were given to the teachers, they've been implementing and using them in the classroom. We also, campus-wide, we actually started this about, I don't know, two, three years ago, we've been doing leveling up. And that's where teachers have conferences with the students. You'd be surprised when you ask your student, how did you do last year? Were you at the approaches, meets, or masters? And they're kind of like, some of the sixth graders are like, well, I think I was at the approaches, I think I was at the meets. But we have, our teachers have individual conferences with those students, and they set goals. Okay, guess what? On this assessment, I want you to get two or three more questions right. I want you to get to the masters, or to the meets. And I think that's beneficial, the teachers can tell you that. Next steps. What we want, moving forward with this data, I want the non-tested subjects and electives, I want them to help us out as well, do some cross-curricular, in the form of bell ringers, warm-ups. I want the social studies and science teachers, the non-tested subjects, to actually help us out. Incorporate some writing, reading and writing, and math will help us out in the science. Science, sorry, science classes will help us with math. We are in the process of beginning a curriculum audit for math and reading at the middle school level. So we are excited about that. We will continue to provide remediation through learning labs in the areas of math and reading. So we're still going to continue with that. And actually, we just wrapped up Opportunity 2, so I've already started looking at the data. Soon as the kids turn in their tests, I'm always on there, where are we at? And we're seeing a lot of green, which is a good thing. So today was the final day. Hopefully, we'll come back and we'll show you that data, which is exciting. I've already kind of took a peek already.
So most of the board wasn't here when, you say that the middle school has come a long ways. I was on the site-based committee at the middle school before I got onto the board. And I remember sitting in there going, oh my gosh, are we ever going to crawl out of this middle school situation that we were in? And when I see this green, it just brings tears to my eyes of how well y'all have done. But as I listen to the administrators ahead of you, how much better it's going to be, I want to see May, of course. We all want to see what's going to come in May, after all the TEES have been taught. But what about next year, after all these other programs have been implemented? Because that's only going to be a benefit to the middle school and the high school level now.
It is.
So yeah, very exciting.
It is, and she's right, we have come a long way. So we were at the C, we're working harder and harder, it takes a lot of work to get to the A, but we're, we're doing it.
Well, this is always good.
Yeah, I think intermediate and middle school have the extra layer of complexity with the double handoffs, right? Beginning and end of a student. Do you have this STAR-type data at the intermediate level, or just the math data?
They don't test in December.
They don't have December test? Okay, okay.
It's only the high school.
And then?
We do work really closely with the, with the high school, I can say that.
Yeah. Oh, and data-wise, um... Do we have it now to where you can identify students that are doing well in the classroom versus maybe not performing well on the test? And what that gap is?
So we have that MTSS RTI, where they're meeting with our instructional facilitators along with Ms. Tierney, and they're having those meetings to address that. Because you're right, there's some kids that, they get anxiety, test anxiety.
I can't take tests, yeah.
It's a big deal, yeah! So we do have those meetings, and we do work through those with those students to provide them some support.
What, what's that, do you know that number?
I don't, offhand.
Just keep in mind, too, that students are more than just one data point. And when we think about students as a whole, a whole child, there are so many different data points just inundating us all the time. One thing that we talked a little bit before, as we passed it off to the principals, was formative assessments and periodic tracking and monitoring student progress in daily. And as we talked about, exit tickets, bell ringers, warm-ups, one thing that we've really focused on this year, and we're going to continue to focus on, and even more so build upon for next year, is our checks for understanding. Making sure that as we are teaching, we are teaching in chunks of time, not just 45 minutes of direct instruction, but making sure that periodically, within five, 10, 15 minutes, we're providing a stop and a check to gauge whether or not our students are getting it. And if not, how are we adjusting our lessons in the moment, so that, again, we're providing instruction that is being received and learned and, of course, retained? So checks for understanding is a really big crucial component of making sure that our kids are on track to performing well on a summative test.
It's 55 minutes in a class period. So if you're a teacher planning, you've got to use that time wisely. So that's why we started with the bell ringers, the exit tickets. Let's be stronger at those, because we have small chunks of time at the middle school. 55 minutes, it goes by quick, trying to get everybody seated. The other thing that I'll talk to is the leveling up. That helps with the anxiety as well. Our teachers will sit down with the kids right before an assessment, and they'll visit with them, and they'll say, hey, what can we do? What are the barriers? How can we get you? And it helps so much. You see them in the hallways? Our ELAR department does a great job. They're there conferencing with the kids. They pull them out one at a time, and they take the time to discuss with them. What can we do? Can we take breaks? What can we do to relieve that test anxiety? That helps, the leveling up.
Anything else?
Well, Ms. Rovino hit on that a little while ago, so she's taking care of it in the intermediate, to be good testers. So that's going to help as they go into middle school. So, you know, if she's, if she gets the head start on it at the intermediate, it's really going to help you guys in middle school. Great job, everybody.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Gavon Rothen, principal of the high school. This is Ms. Cardenas over here. She's our assistant principal for curriculum instruction. And we will be going through the high school's data as of, as of now, because we're live. So our students participated in the December interim. The interim is, counts as one of the at-bats, which will, I'm sure Ms. Adias explained to you. So every student is required to get two opportunities in the brand-new testing platform, to see, not only get a, a gauge of how they do on their particular questions, but the questions have actually a little bit changed a little, they've made it harder. So what you see here is how we compare in the region for Algebra I, Biology, English I, English II, and US History. You will see that we have a, for those at the approaches category, we are well above in English I, English II, and US History, over 56% higher than the, than everybody else. Biology is 39%. Algebra I, we're, we're getting by with 6%. So that, as that approaches, you see the, in the purple section there is, is where we, we lie. The December interim test is, is only multiple choice. So the English I and English II did not include the writing sample. That platform we still have not explored yet. To compensate for that, we will be giving a, an essay portion for the next interim, but we'll have to create that ourselves. So the kids are, we made a Google Classroom, they'll be writing as well, and the teachers will be grading all 600 essays over the course of time to make sure, see how they rank. And that'll help us better prepare us to see where their shortcomings are. You see the above meets and masters as well, and the Kedal supported note, we have not taught all the TEES, and, and we're close to all the TEES in either one of those subjects.
US History is already at your goal.
Yes. US History typically gets 96, 97%. They are, they know what they're doing. Where we're trying to get above average is in our, our meets and masters. Those kids right now are usually our UT on-ramps kids, so the curriculum they use is UTs when they test. So we expect good things from them. We, we always miss out by one percentage point to get that distinction in US History. It's really close across the state when you're preparing yourself to the others. But they stand a very good shot. English I got a distinction last year, so we're excited to see what they're going to do, given, you know, a whole semester, how much more they, they can grow. So those are our scores for this past interim test. So you can see the discrepancy there in the amount of students tested, especially with the freshmen, Algebra I, Biology, and English I. You notice those are the 300s? That's because in Algebra I, the 259 excludes those students who took it in eighth grade. So they don't test, they've already passed. So you'll see a, a drop in the amount of kids tested. Some school districts don't allow their kids to take it, so you, there's, you know, an even number split between Algebra I, Biology, and English I. Our kids take it here. We are.
It will change next year.
Right, we're transitioning.
There won't be Algebra I taught in the eighth grade. There's, there's a reason that the state has eighth-grade TEES. And we can, with the new schedule next year, we can, we can put a gifted or a highly cognitive student that would be taking Algebra I, keep them in eighth grade math, and then through acceleration, his schedule with, they'll be testing block, and they'll be testing in December, they'll be on track to take calculus their senior year.
And also be beneficial for that TSI test. We want to be able to put them through as much math as possible before they have to attempt that test. So you'll see where we're at with those particular subgroups. This Algebra I group, this group of eighth graders, to be ninth graders, were about 80% last year, as their passing rate. So we expect them to be about the same or higher. We've still got some ground to make up, but we feel confident we can make up that ground. Biology as well, you'll see those numbers just there. English II's a lower in course. US History is the smallest cohort, as some of those kids have either moved or been transferred to ACC, and those particularly, so they're not tested as many kids, it's also a smaller cohort of kids.
What, sorry, what grade level is US History?
US History is taken at 11th grade.
11th, okay.
Right. And that might be changing a little bit.
When you were in school, it was probably in the ninth, ninth grade.
No, it was, it was the 11th.
You have, now, because of our Core Path Academy, some kids will be taken that 10th grade as well, to make room in their schedule to go to college. Okay, so student support, so in April, the April intercession, we'll be having our big boot camp for our kids who are, we feel that are going to be invited, they need the extra help and support, so we'll be preparing that for them as well. Just like middle school, we have tutorials for regular classwork, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Thursdays. Through the RTI process, we have increased remediation, so let me talk about what we do for RTI. So in, every child who failed STAR the previous year during fifth-period advisory goes and gets extra help to help them pass STAR. That comes in a blended way of Apex, which is the STAR, their STAR component, as well as hands-on teacher, helping kids out in small groups to get them better. We did, we worked successful with some kids who took the retest in December. They passed, and so we've moved them to double down, so if they, 45, 45 is tricky. Even though there is no history test in eighth grade, or in ninth grade, if they failed in eighth grade, we still have to apply them remediation for that, that time, even though the test isn't until 11th grade. So they're still using that time as well. So we're trying our very best to get kids as much help as we can. Fifth period is still available to them. We're doubling down our efforts to make sure they got what they need. Any student who failed a core class is required with their parents to meet with Ms. Cardenas and Ms. Garza. They're finishing up those meetings to talk about a plan to get them back on track. It's an extensive process, it was like 200 kids, but they met with each individual one, so they're, they're trying to get them to a point to where we feel that they will not suffer anymore, that we're going to bring them to where they back, meaning we need to be quicker than ever. So we have mandatory tutorials, those Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays, they have to go, or they have to go with their teacher if they're not willing to go to the library, or if the library's just not someplace they can, they can make it due to athletics or, or things like that. They have to schedule that time with their teacher. We also have, are using DMAC more extensively, especially in our tested subjects. It's now mandatory that every teacher put their stuff in DMAC, so we can see the data. And we usually like Apex STAR, as mentioned before. Teacher supports, we just send our teachers to the Ford Rock and Review, which is a 10-day framework. It talks about how to hit the most targeted TEES that are tested, and gives the teachers a cheat sheet, rather, of what to look for and how to teach it. So 10 days prior to the test, we'll be going through those as well with our students in the hopes of getting their scores higher. We also continue with Kagan. Kagan is a, it's, it's been around for a while. But it is a way for kids to interact in the classroom, so you'll, the teacher will say, you know, something like think, pair, share, and the kids will think about it, and then they'll talk to each other while the teacher walks around the room to make sure they're actually saying what they're supposed to be saying, as far as whether it's correct. That way, we get total class involvement, not just the teacher teaching. Started softball today, during my observation. It was, it was pretty neat, we were talking about how to catch the fly ball. It was, it was actually really good. And then we've also had a, during our PLC time, we've also given them the opportunity to, to talk about their data. We've also done that, we've sent English I and English II, because it's a totally redesigned for them, it's, it's a total new test. The district was able to send them to a, a good writing workshop that's, that's been very beneficial, the teachers really enjoyed it. So we'll continue to provide remediation, we'll continue to disaggregate our data as best we can. And we're also going to have cross-curricular instruction with world geography, world history, and so they can study the science of whatever they're doing in that culture, that way it kind of bleeds over. And of course, the writing component is huge. That's something that's going to be, we're, it's going to be interesting to see what the state does with this brand-new format. Questions?
I just had an off question. When did, when did STAR change from paper to computer-based?
It's been that way for about.
Two years.
Two years.
Online three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yes.
This is the first, it's required.
Yeah, but we, we were, when it was first offered, we had changed? Okay.
At, at certain levels at the middle school.
Right, we had to, so you had to have the computers do it?
Yes.
And the internet to do it? So there's some difference that had to, to catch up. So it's been about three years, but this has been the first year that, that just the state has said, there's like two reasons, and the other's like something random, that you have to take a paper test, everybody's required to.
My, my question was going to be, if, if y'all were seeing issues on, like, kids sh, taking a paper test is way different than a computer test, and making sure they show their work while doing it on the computer, but we've already been in that process for three years.
Yeah. And with us, it's, it's very high-stakes testing, so they know they don't pass, they don't graduate. So they typically, they, they try hard. You know, and we try to give them tools that they need to, to do that.
So, thank you.
You know, y'all already implemented, kind of started implementing the STAR writing in the classroom, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I thought I saw that come through the Google Classroom, so.
Yes, it's, we're, it'll be fun.[1771.38]
Great job.
Good evening. My apologies on behalf of Mrs. McLaren, who couldn't be here this evening. She's fallen ill. But I, my name is Iris Chapa, and I'm Assistant Principal here at the Academic Career Center. And I'd like to start off first by bringing in our team. And I say team because when we talked about having this presentation, all of our staff. And, you know, we're a small family, but we're here. So if you can all come in really quickly. This team has been an integral, integral part of our, the success on our small campus. And we talk a lot today about data. I'd like to talk to you about success. And success is monumental on our campus. As you all know, we are a dropout prevention school. And so at our race, we call it a marathon here at TMISD. We are the final pull for success. And not just success in the classroom, success passing the EOC test, but also getting them to walk the stage, as Mr. Alvarado said. I do want to introduce our EOC, Star EOC teachers who are rock stars. We have Ms. Candela. Ms. Candela is in charge of English one and English two. Mr. Zavala, our U.S. history teacher. Mrs. Mrs. Imar, our U.S. history and biology teacher. And Ms. Granados, our U.S. history teacher. And Mr. Garcia in, I'm sorry, Ms. Granados, Algebra One, and Mr. Garcia, Algebra One. We'll get started. We want to start off with our performance data. Because we are a dropout prevention campus, I will tell you that most of our students that come to us, come to us for three reasons. They come to us because they have excessive absences, because they have failed two or more core classes, and because they have failed a STAR test, and we need them to pass the STAR in order to graduate. So with those comes a, a pretty much a heavy challenge. And that challenge is, how are we going to get the students to accelerate to graduation, but also pass the required STAR test? So we need to keep them in school, and we also need to get them into STAR to be successful in the STAR. And that's a challenge because they have six classes and they cannot accelerate. So at our campus, when they start the STAR test, they come into classes, they cannot move or accelerate from a STAR class. So they stay in that class until the next testing session. So December is extremely important on our campus because the scores will not come out in time in the spring for them to walk the stage. So December is very important. And we also note that in December, we, this was the last testing option that students were testing in the previous STAR. So you've heard redesign, the new way. That is going to start in the spring. Our goal was very intense with the old STAR. So we are also very happy that the high school, the students that we're getting now, they have been prepped with the STAR redesign as they have been taking the test mostly in the spring. So as you can see, like, like with some of the other campuses, we do struggle with our Algebra and English one. I will say that though, at that time, the students that are coming to us, most of them are juniors and seniors. This was the time that they were taken in with COVID, so they were not on campus. But we are still looking at some of the successes that we have. We were not above or at the region where we hoped to be. But we did, we did find success with biology, with English two, and with U.S. history. Most of the students that come to us, like I said earlier, we're approaches is not where we want to be, but that is considered a success. That makes them, or gives them the green light to graduation. We were very happy and surprised that we had some meets, and we even had a master in U.S. history on our campus. So those are some of our successes. Now, breaking down the data, it, it can be deceiving if you look at it. We have Algebra One students tested. We had 11, three approached. We did not have any meets or masters. But some of the things that I would like to tell you that you don't see is, we had 11 tested, four of them were first-time testers. That means they started for the first time in July, and they took the test in December. Seven of the retest, seven students were retesters. Three passed. Five out of the seven retesters significantly improved their score. If you look at biology, we had 10 tested, five times were first-time testers, five were retesters, and four of, four students passed. Five out of the seven retesters significantly improved their score. Looking at English one, we had 12 tested. Four were first-time testers. We do have some true freshmen on our campus. Eight were retesters, and, and one student passed. Five out of the eight retesters significantly improved their score. And we also had, oh wait, I'll stop there. English two, we had 14 tested, five first-time testers, 16 retesters, and seven students passed, 16 out of 16 retesters significantly, significantly improved their score. And finally, U.S. history, we had 18 tested, nine first-time testers, eight retesters, and nine students passed. Five out of the eight retesters significantly improved. Nine approached, five met, and we had one master. So there's a lot of success. We greatly attribute that to looking out of the box. You know, on our campus, we always say Maslow before Bloom. You're getting students who were not at the high school from the beginning. You know, it was hard for them to come to school. We have students that, you know, went home for COVID, and it was hard to bring them back. And so when they get to us, you know, our goal is get into school every day to build relationships, to have some trust with them, to get them to trust us. A lot of these students have taken the STAR tests and have failed four or five times. And we even have quite a bit of students who have never passed a STAR test. We're looking, and we look back to the third grade. You know, what's going on, what can we do? So we are the, like I said, the baton, the final part of the marathon. And we also recognize that we're, we're just changing hats in the spring. So with redesign, with what the students should come in with from the high school, as far as redesign, I will tell you that T-FAR is playing an important role, which is the Texas Formative Assessment. And those are small formative assessments, no more than 45 minutes. We, you've heard about interim testing. We don't interim test on our campus because most of our students have test fatigue, especially with HP45, they have the required hours. We have three to five STAR tests that students are in every day. And so those small T-FAR tests are what we need. We need them to get accustomed to the new redesign. We're excited, we're ready to meet the challenge for redesign. Whatever the students had that had them unsuccessful in previous STAR, we're excited about the new chapter. We know they're hands-on, we know they're tech-savvy. We know that they text on their phone. And so we think the computer is going to be something new for them. And, and they seem excited, and we're excited. So where do we look to move from here? And this is just some of our success stories, and I have that hand up here. I'll hand that for you in the end. If you look at the bottom though, I, I think it's really important. Although we may not have had the numbers that we'd like to have, I will tell you that with the English one, we had 62 percent that, that showed growth. In other words, they, they improved in their scores. Algebra one, 71 percent showed growth. In biology, we had 80 percent. English two, 100 percent showed growth, and U.S. history, 62 percent. So that's something that we're really excited. We had one student, we're really proud of him. He's currently not, he didn't have a place to live, but he embraced his score 500 points to pass the Algebra one on his fourth attempt. One student passed English one on fifth attempt. 11 students passed on their first attempt after only one semester accelerated learning, which you will know, you noted in this presentation that most of us are gearing. We're trying to get students to pass in a semester as opposed to a year. All right. Our plan of action, all ACC students have been invited to participate in EOC workshops. These workshops are going to be extremely important for our students who will be taking the redesign, and our teachers will be coming in both in February and April intersessions. We've all taken the chore of calling parents and inviting them. We'll make it as fun as it can be, but also have some great learning and opportunities. All ACC students are involved in EOC intense classes with small class-size ratios. Classes are separated for accelerated learning, first-time testers, and retesters. So we can go over the data, see what areas did they need, what areas did they do well, and how can we best meet their needs. ACC students participate in Bright Thinker, online blended learning solution for EOC preparation outside of school hours. So not only are each student in an EOC intense class, in the evening they can go on and get some more information and help there. Students will continue to participate in Texas Formative Assessments, or T-FAR. That is, we talk about AT-BATS, which is required by the commissioner. We are going to be a T-FAR campus, and hopefully these tickets out the door and bell ringers will be great source for data for our teachers and our students. Students are also provided tools that help meet the challenges of at-risk, including specialties that come with intellectual and emotional learning. I will tell you, and I know you may have heard this, we have students reading on a second and fourth grade level. And that is something that we take very seriously, and we are also meeting the challenge. We've had some books come in called Firelight Books, which are, they're aligned with standards, but they're also for a beginning reader. So that, it sounds kind of interesting because we're talking beginning reader for high school students who need to graduate. But they have seemed to be very helpful for all of our students. Students participate in a variety of RTIs. We have adjusted scheduling. Right before our STAR test, students go two times a day to that particular, to prepare for that particular EOC. And then when that EOC's over, we go to the next one. So students are very gracious, and although it is a very nerve-wracking time, a lot of students are, you know, they, they look at the past. I'm not going to pass, this is not going to happen. And, and we have to tell them, you know, look, everything is a success. And then we get them to trust us, and then they end up approaching. So it's one of the things we're really excited about. We also have iExcel, small group paired reading, and an individual support room. Our teacher support, ACC staff participate in STAR redesign workshop at the beginning of the year with Matt Liao from the Service Center. He's been wonderful. He told us, hey, no more pen to paper, we don't do that anymore. We need everyone practicing writing on the computer, and we've taken that very seriously. ACC staff participated in ELA Arts Workshop. Our staff utilizes online presentation tool that allows instructors to integrate activities such as multiple choice, gamified quizzes, interactive videos, and 3D models. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Nearpod. And all it is, is an interactive, it's technology. It's great to prepare them for redesign. While I am a fan of that, and the teachers love it. I'm also real big on, we need to hit the AT-BATS. And AT-BATS are, have to be through TEA, which is T-FAR. And I think it's important to have our students comfortable logging in, utilizing those tools, because that is part of the success. And we'll continue to provide innovative and interactive formative assessments through academic content. We started quizzes thrively and Firelight, Firelight Books, which is what I told you about earlier. Every PLC, when staff goes over individual student graduation plans, what's going on, what do they have that are some issues? We are real big on data, like, like you like, but we're, we also talk about, you know, what's going on, because we have students that, they'll just take a dive, they'll stop coming to school. So it's a lot of what can we do? And they might be doing well in biology, but for some reason in U.S. history, it's just not there. Every, I'll send it, every PLC Wednesday, we're big on the disaggregation of student data. And our next steps to continue to provide multiple opportunities for students to become familiar with STAR redesign. We know that's crucial. Will we have the scores back for them to walk the stage? Not sure. But the important thing is that our students are graduates, and they're successful, and they're ready for college career or whatever else the future holds for them. Practice cross-curricular support opportunities for all five EOCs. Continue to provide support both instructional and emotional for student success, and to continue to study student data. T-FAR, AT-BATS are going to be our key this semester, and provide them with the best tools for successful assessments. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned y'all do have freshmen on the campus?
Yes, sir. We, we.
And sophomores also.
Yes, sir.
So once they catch up where they're, where they were lacking?
Yes, sir.
Do they re-enroll back to the high school, or do they just stay there until graduation?
That's a good question, Mr. Benavides. Do they have the option to go back? Yes. But our goal is to, with, with everyone else in the district, is to provide opportunities, and we're trying to promote going into college and starting that early. Right now, we have students that are starting Delmar College Carpentry. We have a pipeline, and so if we can keep them and on-campus, keep them where they are, but also allow them the time, because a lot, like the carpentry class there is from eight to five, and it's a program through Delmar, that's six weeks, then it goes directly into electrical. Then it goes directly into plumbing, then it goes directly into stair and trim.
And that would apply to a freshman also?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My second question was just what you're hitting right now on Delmar. The past two years that I've been on the board, it was always nice to hear either you or Ms. McLaren say that every graduate or every student that was going to graduate was enrolled at Delmar. Am I mistaken with that? That was, that was.
Yes, yes, sir.
So are we on the same track for this year?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Every student is, has been accepted to Delmar College. We have Bradley Moore from Delmar. He comes every other week. He'll be here during intersession to work with all of our seniors. Not just that, he comes to speak to our juniors and use some, some ideas and.
Great, okay. Good job.
So if, if the students don't get to walk the stage, we are still making sure that they do graduate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Yes, ma'am.
And is there something special done with those, done for those students?
I sure hope so.
Okay.
I sure hope so. For all students, all seniors at the high school and the Academic Career Center. Yes, ma'am. We do offer the STAR test again in the summer. It's the third week of June, I believe. And so students, if they are unsuccessful, we will have them back again in June. Thank you. Great job.
One more, one more question.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
On, when you're comparing your STAR scores, that was just compared by, I guess, test level, not to other alternative schools, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's pretty obvious.
And, and I will, I would like to note that TEAs come out with a framework for 2023 that's going to have a different area for dropout prevention schools. That's part of the new, that's coming next year. And it's going to show, it's going to look at a different level. You know, we're, we're all, we're all running the same race, but it's, we're on. So I'm excited about that. And I think the key to the changes in TEA framework for accountability is growth. And when we saw that happen in the beginning of the year, that got us very excited as teachers because they may not pass, but their growth is such a success, especially for us.
And then? I'm just not familiar on what it takes for someone to, I guess, graduate with the minimum stuff. Is that core classes and then just passing the STAR test? Or is it just passing the STAR test?
Students that come to us will graduate with a multidisciplinary diploma. That is our goal. I mean, do, sometimes they, they, do they graduate with foundation? Yes, but that is as a last resort. So they have to meet the 26 requirements. They, we have them do four years, four years science, four years math.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. And percentage-wise, is it normally they're finishing out their core classes in order to graduate? Or are students like, oh, I just can't pass this algebra test to graduate?
It is both.
Okay.
It is. I, I, I don't think I could tell you that it would be one more than the other because we have students that are in five STAR classes or three STAR classes, but also need, you know, about, about 18 classes to graduate. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Everybody keeps talking about the redesign. Well, I have to say, you know what? That, that means that you can tell your students they've never failed it before, right?
All right. So we can just kind of basically recap, and let me just say that you saw a lot of success tonight. And I think that is, you know, because we have hard-working teachers, they teach with heart. We have wonderful campus administrators, we have instructional facilitators. I think collectively, we work together very well as a team. And I think that attributes to a lot of the success that we're seeing. I believe truly that we're moving in the right direction. And I'm excited to come back and present the end-of-the-year results. And so I'm just going to basically just recap. And so just to kind of like summarize everything, we're pretty much exceeding the expectations of where we need to be right now. There are still areas of growth, particularly, you know, we know math is an area of concern that we're working on, but we're working on it. So just basically, just kind of like summarize TM, primary and intermediate. Again, students are meeting or exceeding the national norm for student growth. Middle school, students are meeting or exceeding Region Two and all of the STAR performance levels for reading and math. High school, again, they're exceeding the Region Two in approaches-grade level performances for all five EOCs, and are exceeding the Region and meets-grade level performance for all of the EOC, except for algebra, but that's, we're going to work on that. And then ACC, lot of great, you know, success stories. They're exceeding Region Two in approaches-grade level performance for EOC Biology, EOC English two, and EOC U.S. So again, you know, a lot of the success that you're seeing tonight is because of the hard work that we're seeing on the campus. And so, you know, and they're a great team. You know, I feel like we have like this open-door policy, and so I think that's really special. And I think that's really kind of helped us this year. So what are our next steps? You know, like I said, these were goals that we set forth at the beginning of the school year, and they're not set in stone. These are living documents. We're going to come back, and at the end of the year, we're going to get together with our leadership team, our leadership team and we're going to evaluate what's working, what's not, what tweaks do we need to make changes for next year. We're going to continue supporting our campuses by meeting the resource needs of the teachers and the students. That's our number one priority. And then of course, like Dr. White was talking about the ORS, we implemented that this year. We want to continue next year. So right now, we're really building the capacity of our campus leaders so that we can continue that tradition next year. So again, just building the instructional leadership capacity by leveraging academic data meetings with all campuses. And so that's another thing that we want to continue. We want to continue having these academic meetings. We know that they're having those meetings on their campuses. And it's very obvious because of the success that we're seeing. But we also want to be a part of those conversations and so be able to come back and report, you know, exactly what we're doing and how we're doing at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year and the end of the year. And so that concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions for us?
I just want to see more green. Those green marks being good.
You've got the great work. I mean, every campus.
Yes, they are rock stars. Rock stars. I enjoyed everything. This was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
So that was just for discussion and report only. If it is okay with the board, if we can go to three, four and five, three and four.
Just three and four.
Three and four, so that we can let the teachers and kids.
Absolutely.
Oh, all right. So we're going to move on to agenda item number three, discuss and consider out-of-state field trip request for TM High School to attend the Thespian Festival in Bloomington, Indiana, June 18th through June 24th, 2023.
Ms. Brad?
Yes, I have some students with me as well that are part of the qualifiers for Nationals for this trip. So good evening, everyone. I just want to take a moment to go back to this past summer before I preface all of the success that we had this past year at the Thespian Festival. So in this past summer, in June, I was able to take two students that qualified for Nationals last November. And there, one of the students qualified for perfect scores from all three judges, won a Thespian Award and then won a Princess Grace Scholarship. $6,000 and a professional mentorship from anyone that they wanted to choose. And people that have won this award include like Leslie Odom Jr., who was Aaron Burr in Hamilton on Broadway. There are people that have been in Marvel movies, dancers, brilliant people. And it's all funded by the Princess of Monaco. And so when that happened, I went, I need more of our students to get to Internationals. This is an opportunity that we can really seize. And I saw some of the work there and I said, our students can do this. We need to enter as many as we possibly could. And so we did. We entered a lot this past November. We entered 16 students and 11 of them qualified for Nationals for this summer, which is absolutely incredible. In addition, two of them made perfect scores from all three judges. And TM had its very first main stage performance, which means out of the entire entries, which is about 3,000 entries, they pick about eight to 10 to perform in front of the entire congregation. And Laird Sterns was the first Telosa Midway main stage qualifier. So these students and myself are asking for an opportunity to go back to Nationals this summer, to give them opportunities to audition for colleges, qualify for scholarships and learn and, and perform their pieces again to try and bring back some more awards and accolades for Telosa Midway, but also just to learn from their craft and learn from professionals from all over the world.
Anybody have any questions?
I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
I agree.
My kids can go to that level and perform.
That level and get out of the state, right?
Yeah. It's a small town, right?
How many chaplains do I have?
It would just be myself and Ms. Reagan, who's the musical director with me that helps them with the solo musicals.
And how many kids are going?
11. Are there any other questions? I'd have to answer. There's lots of opportunities for them there as well. There's workshops every day from, I don't know, 8:00 AM till almost 11:00 PM every night. And it's a very small town, but they bring in a lot of people from New York, from Chicago. And they have opportunities to audition for many different things while they're there.
Madam President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approves the out-of-state field trip request for Telosa Midway High School students to attend the Thespian Festival in Bloomington, Indiana, June 18th to 24th, 2023, as presented.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second the motion and have that opportunity.
All right, we have a motion by Ben Benavides and a second by Paul Mustela. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to agenda.
Thank you.
Yes.
Of course.
Good for now, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I didn't want to take it from the kids, but congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Well, part, a lot of part of it is because of that. So thank you.
So now we're moving on to agenda item number four, which is going to be three now. Discuss and consider out-of-state field trip request for TM Middle School National Treasures eighth grade DC trip for April 2024.
Hello, I'm Angela Stigall. I'm the librarian at the middle school. I've worked at TM since 1994, taught English at the high school for about 14 years and then in 2008, I moved to the middle school and became the librarian. I'm very invested in TM. I've driven an hour every year for all these years because I love TM. And like just sitting here and listening to all of the stuff before this was so great. Like every teacher should have that opportunity to come and do that or like should take a moment to do that. Because if you're ever thinking, oh, I don't know, you know, like this job, whatever. I mean, how can you not be excited, right? Well, one of the things that I love about my job is taking the eighth graders to Washington, DC. It's not something for every single kid. I do offer it to pretty much the whole school. But it's one of those opportunities that I wish that I could take all of them, right? But it's one of those things where their parents have to pay for it. This last trip, the one that we're going to take in April, I came to you in October. Some of you are new to the board, so I had, you haven't heard this, but the rest of you it's basically the same thing. We're going to be taking students, usually it's about 35 kids that will sign up. Their parents have time to pay. The reason why I'm coming to you to ask about the seventh graders who will be eighth graders going on this trip is this will allow their parents a lot longer to pay for the trip. It makes the payment about 165 per month, which is pretty affordable for most people. I have two kids this, for this trip that we're about to take, whose moms have been, I don't know, they made moms, they made tamales, they're making chocolate-covered strawberries, they're doing Easter baskets, all these different things. And they're handsome, everybody are helping them try to raise money. So this particular trip, we go usually in the April intercession. If the calendar does not have an April intercession, we may move it up to March. But we go over four days. It's, this is what it includes. You have round-trip airfare from Corpus Christi. We have a private chartered bus. We have a private tour guide. We have our own hotel rooms and a hallway that has a private security guard for us from 10 o'clock at night to 6 o'clock in the morning every day. Breakfast, lunch and dinner every day, all of the tickets to all of the different attractions. There's an insurance, like if the kids get hurt on the trip. There's travel protection. There's, what else? I think that may be it. There's a big, long list of things. But it's a really great benefit for these kids because they see so much that they've never really been experienced with, they've never been able to experience. They get to see the history of our nation's capital, how government works. We go to the Capitol, we go to the Library of Congress, we go to the Supreme Court, all of the different memorials. A lot of our kids have never been outside of Corpus, so they, they don't know what buildings other places look like and that you can actually walk places. Because this is not really a walkable city. They get to experience food from all over the world. They hear people speaking different languages. And my favorite part about it is every time we go to a place like, I don't know, the Smithsonian Museum of African-American History. We don't have a lot of African-American people that live in Corpus Christi. So when we go in there, they're just floored. And when we walk out, they will say things like, wow. Because you see all these things on the news, but they have no idea. I mean, a book can, you can learn a lot in school and everything, but when you see it, you see it come to life, you see all of the different multimedia things that they have and all of the artifacts that they have. It's just, it's just different. It hits them differently. And I love that. That's my favorite thing about it. I've been doing this since 2013. I don't get any kind of pay for it and I don't care if I do or not because the pay is seeing them grow when they go on this trip. So that's the thing.
A great opportunity has been a long time. Like you said, kids get to see something that none of, many of them have never been exposed. Exposure is wonderful, especially to see a lot of the stuff like you talked about our nation's history and how the government structures and everything. All that, Washington, DC is a, that's special.
And it's, and you know, like my parents were older. They're both teachers for many, many years in CCI SD. And my father was old enough, like he would have been 100 if he was still living this last year. And so he was in World War II and so were his brothers. And one of them was a prisoner of war for the duration of World War II. So I have a very different thought process when it comes to being an American, you know, and patriotism and things like that. And a lot of the kids now, they don't, they don't have that. They don't understand it. They don't know why you stand up for the pledges and, and what the flag stands for and things like that. So when we go, you see that when they come back, they're very different about that. And I, and I love that too.
Do they, the tour company, you set up meetings with our actual like senators representatives?
No, it's something because it's such a short amount of time and we don't have much time to work with.
Tenerife is packed, all right.
Yes, it's packed. Because if we're going, we're going to see it all. And we go from seven in the morning to 10 o'clock at night. Because that's what you do with middle school kids. You run until they're. You don't want to have any, any energy at night, you know? And then there's usually a very large security guard in the hallway and it's out there like, girl, I know you ain't gonna be trying me right now. They're really funny. So anyway, it's, it's a, it's one of those things that's so packed.
My boy still remembers losing about 10 pounds on that.
We walk like seven or eight miles a day. And the, the other part of it is it gets them ready for the trip if they decide to go on the European trip with Laura Gray. I'm kind of like the tryout trip. And, you know, like are they going to behave and that kind of thing? And if you can handle this, then you can handle, you know, 12 days in Europe, so.
And then what's the, you said it was 165 per month.
It's 2463, I think, this year. It was 1,200 when I started 10 years ago. Every year it gets more and more and more.
Does that include the $100 insurance for the money back or not?
No.
No, okay. Is it still $100 for that insurance?
It's 119.
119.
But that's one thing that I have a slideshow to tell the parents, you know, if you want that protection, it's $119. If you want the any reason, any time protection, it's 239, I think. That if you wanted to, the morning of, you could say, I'm not going and you could get your money back.
I know it definitely opens up more of an opportunity when you start the trip earlier where parents have more time to pay because that monthly amount is a lot if it's, they don't have a lot of time to pay. So you're actually opening it up to, to more kids now that maybe are going to be able to, to attend now.
Definitely. Because we were on this kind of cycle before, but then COVID stopped it. And we couldn't go anywhere. We didn't know. And they kept telling us every three months, well, it'll be good in three months. Nope. Okay. They push it back. And so we had to do that for a little bit, but now we're catching up to getting back in that cycle.
Awesome. That's a great experience.
And the MAC, you say 35 students, but it's open to everybody. The max you've had pre-COVID was around that number?
I think the most we ever took was 38. Yeah. I try not to do, I, there are some schools from California that take three charter buses. I love these children, but I would never do that. One is my max. That's a lot of kids. I mean, those people from California, they will bring like 300 children on a trip. And you would not even believe it. When, when we go places, I'm like, oh, could not be me.
They got their own hotel. All right, do we have a recommendation?
We do. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approves, this, my bad. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approves the out-of-state field trip request for Telosa Midway Middle School eighth grade National Treasures trip in April 2024, as presented.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion that we consider the out-of-state field trip request for the Middle School National Treasures eighth grade DC trip, April 2024.
All right, Paul Mustela makes a motion and it has been seconded by Janie. All those in favor? No opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting.
Okay. Does the board need to take a five-minute recess?
I would suggest it, yes.
Okay. It's 8:07 and the board's going to take a five-minute recess.
Hope you have a great night.
Thank you.
So everybody be back in a bit.
There's Connie Connie.
You know, she every day, I think you call me. I feel like I owe you those questions. But I should go first.
Was that a good leave or a bad leave?
Oh, yeah.
Connie Connie Connie. She's like, it just rolls.
Hit it, Paul, hit it. I know what you're doing.
He hadn't eaten. He came straight, straight from the game. The game.
Because that was the protein and stuff that was making it consistent.
I think Carson had those.
Yeah, I hate that Kayla missed it. Kayla probably wouldn't be going to, to. Yeah, if she had gone to DC, so. But they're actually taking a group in the high school to DC.
Did you get? The one that missed? Yes.
Yes. And we told her no to that.
Because of.
She's going on the international studies and like, uh-uh, you need to get a job. We don't even have trees big enough in our yard to grow money.
You're right about that. You wait till you have three in college and then you'll be.
I like J.J.
Yeah, just about.
Yeah, you're about to have three.
Where is she? You gonna go?
She's going to UT.
UT? What was her?
I was going to go to baseball, but now they're, and they're not playing well.
24?
Kenley's been a.
That's awesome.
She's going to say, watch the blood. The top five do something.
Of course, things can change.
Yeah.
We'll wait till the next break when I get played.
Bring it on, here. You're banking on another break, Paul?
I ate a piece of bread. I'll be eagle over in those sessions.
Do you want some, some brain gum? No?
Do you mind if I try one of those?
Yeah. Okay, it is, it is cinnamon, so it's kind of strong. What?
If I had experiment, you don't think so?
No, what, cinnamon gives heartburn?
I don't know.
I think it actually helps, or is it peppermint that helps?
So...
Yes, I think you're right.
It is really strong at first, and it's almost like a mint at first?
It's not one of those things that, you know, you get real, like one of those challenges.
No, 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 no. So suck it like a mint, and then after, I don't know, 30 seconds, then you can start chewing.
Good job.
Yes. Go get a tube. I've seen on Shark Tank. Did your son get any swimming scholarship?
No, no. When we went to Encarnate Work, he...
Did he, I guess you reach out and like send videos and stuff to try, or?
Sam McKinley, their birthday's in January.
They have another program that him and Julie will probably get in just to stay in the pool, because that keeps them in shape.
Oh, yeah.
He's real, real, he's built solid, but he's heavy up top. So like on the relay and his 200 medley bike.
I'm like, really?
The other kids that are his same size, but they're a little bit smaller frame, they're fast. For some reason.
Just genetic.
Genetic, every time he does try, he just quit. But then he gets a little chuckle, he's like, oh, still quick. As soon as he quits trying, he'll get a little lightweight.
There's no chance.
You know, hey, you made it to state, that's fine.
Don't you dare.
Because he did it on the...
Do they get like, I know in like football, can you take a little bit of green, does this one get anything?
They have the whole medals.
The medals?
The guys that won.
That's like the one. But they want, but he wants to go to the department.
Yeah, he wants to go.
And that...
She's gonna go for...
San Antonio?
Yeah, San Antonio. She's going for pharmacy, he's going for his BSc, so he can continue on to his... That's what his, that's what the goal is.
They could, yeah, because if they stay together, they could open up a little...
Yeah, well, his thing would probably be a hospital.
You're welcome.
Both boys are following that pattern.
Pretty awesome.
Wait a couple more minutes before we go.
They'll be okay, they'll stick with me, but...
So Dan is doing that, figuring out how his...
I was seeing...
The sweets out there.
Very graphic, I says, like, graphic stuff.
Where's, do you go into school?
The island.
On the island? Yeah, the dean of it is in my leadership course, I took a tour, like, oh, they're so lifelike, and the amount of, yeah, it's scary. They have the second best program in college stations.
Alright, we're actually gonna call the meeting back to order, we're back from recess at 8:14 PM. Alright, so we're gonna jump back over to what was Agenda Item Number Two, that's Agenda Item Number Four, discuss and consider the second reading of DEC Local.
Ms. Alizondo?
Yes, members of the board, and Mr. Van Maitre, this is the second reading that we're bringing forward for policy DEC Local. And if you remember, this is a policy which includes a language that will give us the ability to create a sick leave pool for an employee who is suffering from a catastrophic leave illness, or a catastrophic injury for themselves, their spouse, or their children. And this is just that. And then we will have a committee that will establish procedures that they already have, and those are procedures, and those will be presented, Mr. Van Maitre, for final approval. But this is the second reading. Any questions?
So I have a question, when I was reading it, and maybe I just missed it, but it says that an hourly employee with the Maintenance and Transportation Department shall not earn paid local leave, so they don't get any local leave, or is that in a different section?
They don't get local leave because they get vacation. Hourly leave employees will get their hourly leave, and then they can earn up to 10 days of vacation. Where extended employees, we don't have that. And in addition, they also have 11 paid holidays, we don't have that either. So they only get state leave.
And they're not able to get this bank?
That is correct, because they don't earn local leave. We don't, yes, and this is only for employees who have local leave.
And that's because you can't cross the PTOs?
Well, since they don't, since, as a benefit, they get other benefits that the professional staff and clerical staff and peer professionals receive, because we only get paid for the days we work. We don't get any vacation days, and we collect local leave. They don't. So it would be an accounting, Philip, maybe you can speak to that, it would be a counting nightmare to try to cross that. I'm not sure how that could be done, how, if they're not accruing local leave, how can you then afford it to them?
Yeah, but, so I understand if it cannot be crossed, but can there be, I guess, a separate pool for then, within what?
Within there?
Yeah, there, yeah.
Perhaps?
Perhaps we can do that, if that is the desire of the board. And we also know that, and Patrick can address this, the population that we are talking about, it's a very transient population. When they found out we were gonna give retention bonus, man, we had a lot of them, the minute they got it, boom, they're gone. When we got COVID leave, we got a lot of them, and they took their five days and boom, they're gone in a week or two.
But what we can... It could be a retention tool, right? I mean, it's...
But what we can do is look at other districts to see what they are doing, if anything, and bring it back.
Because these employees are working through the summer, right? They're working Monday through Friday through the summer.
Yes.
260 days. Yeah, so they're working more, and they're getting a little bit more, you know, stuff off, but just something to look at.
So you can steal the good ones from the other districts?
Yeah.
And we always try.
Well, we couldn't have school without them.
That's right.
That's right, and that's kind of where I'm headed, is...
It'd be the same thing for the bus drivers. But we can look, I can do some research, and we'll certainly come back to you.
I think it's a good point, Paul.
Bus drivers would fall in that category?
It would be your P4s, which is your true hourly employees, your bus drivers and your maintenance.
They're paid on a bi-weekly.
And then, I like Ariaga's suggestion during the first reading of no cap to the pool, and I know that's not in the policy, that's gonna be in the procedure, but what did the one y'all drafted say?
30 days. And then, you know, I had asked Mr. Van Maitre, is that 30 days the whole time they're here? Is that 30 days every year? So he suggested maybe 30 days once a year. So somebody who's suffering from a long catastrophic illness could qualify for more than 30 days, because they could be 30 days this year, and 30 days next year, and we have employees who are in that situation.
I like the no cap, that's a procedure, not a policy thing.
And where we received the 30-day guidance was Tasby.
That is correct. Because there was a district who gave 90. That's a lot of days, it said the average, the average around the state is 30 days.
I mean, it's a lot of days until somebody needs it, and then it's not enough days, like, it's, I'm thinking long-term for the people that need it, you know, you got cancer treatments, I don't know, I haven't read yet, like, where I work, you get four months or six months full pay, six months half pay, you know, they got pretty good benefits, and I don't see that in here where, how much they get, so, you know, anything you can give them. But like you said, it's a procedure, it's not a policy. I think the policy, this is a great idea for the policy.
It's a start.
It is a start.
Absolutely.
It was a good idea when we first did it.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
But for people that weren't on the board and everything, is that people were abusing it, and people became a popularity contest, who they were gonna give it to, it's kind of, you know, unfair.
I think in those cases, and I don't know the case there, but sometimes we have a tendency to chase the minority. There's a minority abusing it, but you impacted the majority by taking it.
People who really need it, and even those who used it, they really needed it, they really needed it.
But all those, like, when y'all took it away, all those cases where like, everyone was getting COVID, and they would pick specific ones?
No.
Oh, this is, okay. I don't know any specifics, sorry, I'm good.
Specifics, and it was over a period of time with different people, it became a popularity contest, and I'm not gonna have that pool, and everything. It was, it was being abused.
So does the district offer ancillary insurance policies, like AFLAC or something like that?
Yes.
Like for long-term, I know we're saying no cash, I think you could have, you know, some kind of short-term benefit for them, and then, you know, they'd be responsible for anything long-term, I mean, I'm just...
The district offered that, but it would be at the employee's expense.
Right, sure, of course.
So we do have all those insurances that we offer.
And we have extended leave, which I think you touched on in the first reading.
Yeah, I think it'd be very good for our employees who really need it.
I agree.
Well, I think it would be great to include all the employees.
I still think it was a good idea and everything, I just wanted to go, but...
Any other questions? Paul, you okay?
Madam President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the second reading of policy DEC Local as presented.
I will make the motion that we accept the second reading of DEC Local as a good addition to our benefits.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I will. I'll second it.
I have a motion made by Paul Mustela, and Paul Ariaga seconded it. So now we'll vote, all those in favor? No opposed, motion carries 7-0.
So now can someone use this tomorrow?
Yes, but there's no red procedures in places, so what needs to happen? Yes, we do have to tomorrow.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, discuss and consider approval of agreement for opinion, research for decision-making agreement.
No, it's the calendar, five calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, sorry about that. So we'll discuss and consider approval of the 2023-2024 TM ISD Academic Calendar.
Madam President, members of the board, much discussion or angst was directed towards the way that the calendar was formulated and implemented for this school year. From what I understand, it wasn't collaborative, and it was done very early in the school year, and there was some angst, significant angst associated with that. When I met with Dr. White, I asked him that the process be as collaborative as possible, and that all staff have an opportunity to have a voice. I've got some heartburn with this calendar that we're bringing to you tonight, but it's, it checked the boxes that I outlined that they went through. So I'll let Dr. White present the process, and then we can have a discussion.
Okay, I'll do the best I can. Alright, so along the same lines of what Mr. Van Maitre was just saying, the process was collaborative. So between articulation from the campus to the district level, they have two decision-making committees. One at the campus level, which is the site base, and then at the district level, it's known as the DEIC, the District Education Improvement Council. And so together, they worked in coordination with one another, starting from the top, with the kind of expectations and kind of directions, if you will, as far as how to go about creating the actual calendar itself. And so we, as a district, through the DEIC, lay out all those rules, so that it kind of helps box and keep everybody within a certain framework, so that we're all working on the same page. And once we've done that, we deliver that type of training, if you will, to the DEIC, that kind of goes ahead, and is the calendar development process started. And so what happens from there, since each of the members on the DEIC are representative of the campus level, they take that information back, and they then work with their campus SBDMs to begin developing a calendar that is reflective of those rules, but also reflective of the preferences that each campuses have. And so all five SBDMs work together, they met several times on each of the campuses, and were asked to put together around two to four calendars that embrace different features, kept within the rules, but also considered different variables, like staff development days. Took a look at other variables like grading cycles, do we want six weeks, nine weeks, that type of thing. And so Mr. Van Maitre was asking us to get as creative and outside the box as we could, but also within the confines of the rules that were set. And so from there, each of the campus SBDMs developed around two to four calendars, of which around two, after being voted on or went through a majority vote process on each campus, those were the calendars that were taken to the district committee for review and further consideration. And so each campus went through that opportunity, each campus brought around two to three calendars for the district review, and from that process, it led to two calendars rising to become the two top selections, as well as three grading cycle options. We had six weeks only, nine weeks only, or a combination where we would see six weeks at elementary campuses, primary, intermediate, and then nine weeks at the secondary campuses, which are middle, high, and ACC. From there, everybody got a chance to vote on those two top calendars, Calendar A, which, if we can just think about what the calendar looks like this year, is just about a mirror image of what we have right now versus Calendar B, which, as we can go through the results here, won out. Like Mr. Van Maitre said, the expectation was that all staff members had an opportunity to vote, therefore, the vote was conducted through Google Form. That survey was submitted to staff, they had one week to vote, and they had two voting options, one on the calendar, which we can see here, we had 368 responses, and of that, 200 voted for Calendar B, which gave us the majority vote for that calendar. From there, their second vote was to choose a grading cycle. And you can see, again, the majority vote came from the six weeks only at 196 votes. To go further into Calendar B and what features it looks like, you can see the breakdown of the key components here in this chart, and then, of course, Philip, if you go one more page, then you'll see the actual calendar outline itself. And so I would say, just off the top, looking right at it, you'll probably note the biggest difference, just again, surface level quick view, will be the January winter break, and the amount of time that's being packed into that particular off period for students and staff, versus how we have it right now, where that month looks very staggered. We've got about two, two and a half weeks off, and then we come back for a week, and then we're off again for another week for livestock show. This calendar fixes that issue by giving us the entire time, but also considering that week, the day after MLK Day, which is the livestock week, we have intercession to help us transition our students back into school, and then on that following Monday, we have that staff development to get everybody ready, and then we kick off the second semester on that Tuesday.
What drove this change, need for change, like, how did this discussion even come up to have? And then the second question is, you know, you said A was similar, were they allowed to vote on keep it as is?
Yes.
Okay.
Good F, but the committee wanted to try something different.
That was Calendar A.
Yes, Calendar A was...
I thought you said it was similar.
No, it's similar in the sense that it's a mirror image of what you would expect the calendar to be right now. No, it's similar in the sense that it's a mirror image of what you would expect the calendar to be right now. There, there was like one tweak in the staff development day, but by and large, it had the same breakout, the same off times, and then the same intercession.
Did calendar A have an A to an intercession?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, talk about how that is harmful for testing.
Sure. Okay, so you'll note right away too, as you look at the January time period, that in February, we do not have the intercession, and then in April, we do not have the intercession. The intercession that we have in second semester is in March, which almost looks like that would be labeled spring break, but it's being our intercession to align to the, um, other districts' spring breaks so that, for two reasons. One, we are maximizing our ADA for when our students are in school, because regardless if we're in school or not, everybody knows that Corpus Christi and the likes are off, and therefore our students kind of treat that like it's a come and go type deal. And so we definitely noticed the ADA hit during that time period. And so one of the things that the committee was very adamant about trying to fix was how do we not take that ADA hit, knowing that we take it every time we have the calendar schedule as currently sits? Therefore, that was one reason why that, uh, change was built in, was to address that. And then also too, knowing that in April, if you look closely at the pink, uh, blocked, uh, window period, that is when spring testing happens. Currently, our intercession break is the week before our students are expected to test for the first time in the spring.
Not good.
And it's not a good model, because again, as much as we tried to promote and market intercession, that does not guarantee that all students are coming and are present for that instruction. This calendar addresses that issue by having all students in session at that time so that we are continuously moving in the direction of getting everybody ready for testing, rather than trying to get everybody back into the motion of things one more time for testing, knowing that they only have a few days to do that. So again, this calendar addresses and fixes that issue as well. It also frontloads all of, uh, a good portion of the instruction first semester so that, as we heard tonight from the campus principals, we haven't covered the teaks yet, we haven't gotten to those teaks yet, addressing that through this calendar by frontloading more instructional time in the first semester will help address that issue so that when we do progress monitor and get our data back mid-year, we have a better idea of how much our students are actually getting the, uh, teaks or not, as far as how much we still have to do in order to prep and teach and get them ready for the remainder of the teaks. So it just gives us a better scope of where our students are at, helps our teachers better cover those teaks further in the year or more in advance in the year so that we have more time to analyze and put plans in place, where if we know we put the plans in place, our students will be in session because, again, we are booked to be in session, don't have that intercession where we're trying to struggle with remediation arrangement with those other students that we're targeting, but the other students who don't come, we're trying to get them back ready into the swing of things. That's no longer the, no longer the case with this calendar.
Question. So that March intercession, that mirrors CCISD's break?
When it was this year, yes.
When it was this year?
Yes.
Is it, but we don't know what theirs is gonna be next year, because if it isn't this week, then we're still gonna have that same problem with ADA.
But generally speaking, that's the week that the majority of students take their spring break. That doesn't mean that they can't change it to another week, but generally you see it the second week in March.
Don't they pass two-year calendars?
Yes, and I want to say CC, uh, passes a two-year calendar, so they are having the same as it will be this year into next year as well.
And we're gonna have 23 days off of the Christmas holiday of school days off altogether, plus the weekends. That goes back to what we did, what, two years ago?
Yes, so.
Wow. That bothers me, uh, particularly with childcare. The other part of the calendar that bothers me is go to the beginning of school, uh, Phillip. It was pointed out, and I agree, it's very difficult for teachers to start school on a Monday because that means they'll have to do their meet the teacher, sneak peek on a Thursday or Friday, and their rooms aren't ready, they're in professional development, and by doing that, we're asking them to work the weekend prior to that. That component, and also, uh, even though it's, um, advantageous to testing, if you look at that, uh, scroll down to where March is at the top, that's, that's a very long, period of time with only Good Friday off. Now, the vast majority of, of schools that I, all the schools that I've been in are used to that. They're conditioned for that. We're not, we're not. That, that worries me, but I also understand when my high school principal tells me our ADA, uh, when we're in school and CCISD, Flower Bluff are not, it's gonna go in the tank. So, um.
Gotta pick your battles.
I am looking at the CCISD calendar for 2023-24, that is their spring break.
Yes, it is. We do have 10 bad weather days.
Correct. We, uh, built into the schedule with our minutes, because again, it's more about the minutes than it is the actual days. The minutes give us, uh, plus 10 at the secondary campuses, we have plus 10 days to work with. And then at elementary campuses, we have plus five days. So overall, we have at least five days of bad weather makeup to play with in the event that we need to call school or need to do something different with the schedule.
And on this, this calendar, we've got at least six weeks in each. Six weeks.
No, one of them is, is very short.
Well, that's, that's concerning for.
One of them is 23 days.
So that's, I mean, I know at least at the high school level, um, getting grades in, or what I'm seeing as a parent, getting in a grade ten to make our kids successful in the classroom, they're struggling to do that in six weeks, and we're gonna cut that down. How are those kids going to be able? Because we want them to remain eligible for band and extracurricular activities. I think we're setting them up for failure with that.
What, what grading period is that, Dr. White, that's 23 days?
That would be the fifth one.
Which one?
Cycle five. Which is from March 4th to April 12th.
With spring break included?
And that's, and that's where we lose the week, is spring break. But to try to answer your question, uh, Ms. Boone, the, um, DEIC as well as the campus principals are looking at, um, reevaluating their grading guidelines to address that we, to where we know that the amount of days don't necessarily match what they, we typically give for the amount of assignments that we are, um, giving students. Therefore, they would make adjustments and that we to reflect the amount of days that they would see in that cycle.
I get, I get concerned a little bit too, but, you know, today we saw all those presentations and all our grading is there, everybody's saying, we're, we're going, we're going.
We're going.
And now we're gonna throw this in there, and yeah, an ADA week, I get it. But if we're, if we're moving in the right direction, this is a huge change, I think, for people.
What, what, uh, what concerns you the most, Paul, that there's no intercession in April?
Yeah.
And then the long break.
The long break in, in December concerns me for the community, but also for the.
Well, look, let's look at December. We're going to school late.
Yes.
That's another concern. Look at when we're getting out. The 21st.
That's 33 days.
Now, were all the teachers, were they okay with this calendar? This was a.
No, no.
No?
The people, I, I did faculty presentations, uh, last week at the, at the, um, elementaries. One elementary hates this calendar. The other elementary likes it. I wouldn't say they love it, they like it. I haven't been at the secondary, but we have their principals. Can you all talk about your teachers?
Ours did not like the five weeks off. They kind of wanted to go with the similar, but.
That's, that's concerning.
They wanted the six weeks, they wanted the six weeks, so they voted for the six weeks.
A lot of time off.
That was their concern, is that there's a lot of time.
One, then you're not giving them anything. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I just, they're not giving them anything right.
We actually authored this calendar. This was the high school's, um, pick. Um, it was picked based on a nine-week system though, not a six-week system. So when it was drawn out and authored, it was based on that. Us as high school people, um, typically like nine weeks. Um, this district has never done it. Um, other districts like it because it, it does huge things for eligibility, monstrous things for eligibility. But it also, at the secondary level, like that last, um, December, we start testing so soon that we only give our kids like 20 days to do six weeks of the work because we're so hit up with testing. Um, so that's, that's concerning for us, and we're gonna have to pay attention to how we plan out our year, but it gives us enough time to plan it out. Uh, so it's, um, you know, we like the spring break idea because we don't see our kids. I mean, I'm just gonna be honest.
Right.
Our seniors don't show up and nobody shows up freshman through sophomore, senior class Friday. So it's, um, you know, it's, it's a wreck for ADA, we'd lose that week anyway. But our teachers, for the most part, wanted the month off because they didn't like the stop-start between, um, livestock show. They, they would start, the kids would finally, you know, high school kids, they, they don't go to bed till four in the morning playing video games, and then just when you get them back into the regular school things, they're off playing video games again till four in the morning. And it's a total restart. My wife is a kindergarten teacher, she didn't like it either. It's, it's retraining kindergarten kids is like herding cats. And so when you have to redo it back and forth again, it's, it's a problem.
So it's concerning to me that this calendar was chosen assuming that it was gonna be on a nine-week grading period when they voted.
Well, I think the, yes and no. Really, just really what you're voting for is the month of December or January. Are you voting for that break or not? Do you want that, that's really what it comes down to with both calendars. We adopted this one to a six weeks, we can, we can do that. But the, the crux of both calendars is, do you want the month off in January or not? That's where the main.
Because the first semester was similar, because ours was calendar A, middle school authored calendar A. First semester is the same, it's the second semester when it comes to the January.
And that, that testing week in December only affects us. No other campuses test in December, it's just us and, and ACC. But it's, um, that, that's gonna be real hard on us to get a six weeks worth of work done in that timeframe.
Well, I mean, I have a child at home that struggles getting, getting all of the work done in a six-week grading period, and you try to do it in a four-week grading period.
So are they tailoring the, the information to, uh, to that shortened period? I would imagine they're not trying to squeeze, yeah.
Conversations will have to happen.
Yes, we, this would have, this would force us to have to plan a little bit differently, knowing that we've got some of the plans in place.
At the high school.
But so, so let me say.
All campuses, but yes, particularly at the secondary campuses.
Our grading guidelines match, there's secondary and an elementary. The secondary would have to be redone, um, as far as getting three major grades in, 10, that's, you know, 10 regular grades. Three tests in four weeks is.
But what I'm talking about is December, they don't test in December.
High school does.
No, I know, but the, the, the other ones don't. So it would be all that would have to figure it out.
You're talking about just minimum tests, test in each class is what you're saying, right?
Not next year.
We have to redo that.
Yeah. Next year, he's gonna have all his algebra. Next, right now, he only had retesters take the, the EOC in December. Next year, he's gonna have first-time takers in English one and Algebra one.
So I wanna talk, what, what is the, for a normal six weeks, the minimum amount of test grades? Major, major grade a teacher has to get?
For subjects, it's three and 10, three, three majors, 10 minors.
So if you cut down to a four week.
It would have to be two majors.
And so if that kid came to school and had two bad days, and that was the two test days, that kid's done?
Correct. But at the same time, we would look at it as, so we also both agree that our tests are weighted too much in this district. So we can take a look at a weight to make sure that it's not 60% of your grade. It's far less, so it has less of an impact. That's something we've already talked about.
We've talked about.
Because we both feel the same way, uh, about it.
Especially when they're coming from the intermediate and they have no major grades.
Right, it's all factored in, right.
So they, the transition is hard from fifth to sixth.
It is, it is.
So, you know, we made those grading guidelines, it kind of, last year at the very beginning in response to what was occurring with DEA. So those were really based on three different schools who weren't year-round, grading guidelines. Because we had to get them to, now that I think that we've lived them, we've seen the errors and we're gonna correct them. Um, and we'll talk about it, you know, with, with Dr. White, but, I mean, if this happens, I am in good conscience as a principal, wouldn't allow that many major grades, and I wouldn't allow that to be such a high of a weight. I don't think we both, we're both pretty much on board with that, we'd have to correct it. And that's okay, you know.
Yeah, and making sure the students know.
Right.
You know what's going on too, because that's, that's, that's the biggest thing.
Let me ask, oh, go ahead. On calendar A, because I don't, I don't have it.
Yeah, calendar A didn't get put in our board book in here.
So what does it do, calendar A, what does it do in December?
Can you pull up?
Can someone go print it?
It's the same calendar, it's, it's what we have right now.
I think we're wanting to see side by side.
I can show you, but it's the same calendar as we have right now.
But does it only have, you only have also four weeks instead of six weeks? So, I mean, there's no difference in that, in that category.
Well, I'm just saying.
It just splits up the January.
It's, that January is gonna have that break in between the livestock show.
But as far as the great, your, your four week, you still have a four-week testing deal in December.
And it's gonna be, as Mr. Van Maitre said, it's gonna be way more extensive for us because only state-certified teachers can give tests. And so we're gonna take teachers who teach geometry, Algebra II, out of the sophomore and junior classes to test, which means those classes are gonna be kind of left with a sub. And that, that creates a whole nother.
And on calendar A, December, you're off by December 15th, I think, I don't even remember, which is what we're used to already. You go an extra three days, I think.
Because we're off. Yeah, but in January, you're.
Isn't the calendar that we're currently running new?
The calendar that you all proposed?
Running right now, 22-23 calendar.
It's the, it was already the first iteration of.
Okay, got you.
Yes.
So prior to 22-23, what was 21-22?
It was that full month off.
It was like this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't new?
No.
Okay, got you.
This is, this is going back to normal in terms of.
I'm just bringing it up because it becomes an issue every single year.
Two years, then we had the month off, or we had the whole month. It's only been two years, I think it was back in, I was at intermediate, so.
Yeah, and Mr. Van Maitre, I don't know if, if we do adopt this calendar, can we do it, like you said, CCI, can we do it for a two-year like that we know, or the teachers know?
We can't do that, we can't do that tonight.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, you, you can't have the authority to adopt a five-year calendar, if you want. Uh, it, it's your prerogative.
And, and the only reason I say that is because you can.
Plan.
Work it, plan ahead for the next two, three years, you know, this is what the board approved.
Exactly.
Well, let me tell you another flaw, and I will take the heat on this. A, a flaw in this process was the only parents that were, had a voice in this were those that were on the DEIC.
That was the question, do parents, parents get to vote?
I, I believe when we do this again, we need to get the community's involved, voice as well. And that wasn't the case this time.
Because as we all well know, this calendar is already out. We haven't even approved it, it's already out with the community. And I was getting calls and I'm like, oh, we're gonna get 30 days off again, I like, I haven't voted on anything. But yes, if you might as well get the community involved, if it's gonna be out, you might as well, we'll get everybody involved. You know, I agree with that. You know, the only, I'm sorry, the only thing that worries me is like what can say? It, it's a lot of days off, but we did it two, three years ago for two years in a row or whatever like that, almost. I think it was two years in a row. And if we keep putting up notice, well, you know, you got.
We're also gonna run Care Camp.
Okay, that's what, you know.
For the little ones.
Yes.
Okay, that's another option. Also, the, the one thing that I did, uh, worry about this past year was the lunches and stuff for the kids and, and all that kind of stuff, what we could provide for them. I, I, I think I brought it up to you, I'm not sure it was you or Ms. Cora, but that worries me on the, on the length of time off. Some of these kids come to school and this is the only meal they have. that worries me on the on the length of time off. Some of these kids come to school and this is the only meal they have. So that's something we need to take into consideration and make sure our children are being fed throughout this whole time because it's thirty-three days off, including the weekends.
So, Dr. White, that calendar A has an intercept.
Yes.
And it is six weeks, every, every six weeks.
It is a six-week grading period, correct?
It started on a Tuesday.
So the the calendar that had the um twenty-three-day-only calendar B and this one is a is a problem because we're te- the kids are gone a week and a day and then they're back four days and then boom, they're in they're in this testing.
Yeah, I can under- I can understand that.
That's what, that's better for the children and the teachers to get prepared for it as well as matching up the spring break. And I know that that's been a problem every year because we've had it not during their other spring breaks. And it's been a problem for several years absenteeism during that time.
All right, let me ask you this. Uh, on both calendars, what's the number of days that students are in instruction?
Each calendar has one hundred and seventy-eight and one eighty-seven, so all that is.
One seventy-eight. So Philip, we've we've built in some days for bad weather. If we meet the minimum minutes, which is seventy-six thousand what?
Five, six.
We we don't lose, we don't lose funding for days that they're not in school, correct? If we meet the minimum minutes. I know the teachers have to work one eighty-seven.
As long as we're, as long as we're reporting, the way they calculate ADA on six-week basis, like how many days we say are in this six-week period, that's how many get divided. That's that's the number that, you know, if Johnny's here every day and that's six weeks that we report through PMS, that that is, ADA though is driven by days.
So so then it would be a decrease in funding.
Well, if it's driven by days.
It would just, it would just, we would just shrink our days that are divided, you know. If there's thirty days in this, in the six weeks, then every day is, you know, is one thirtieth. So if you show up every day, you're gonna give you a full ADA. So if there's, so if there's only, if there's only twenty-eight in the six weeks, then you divide there's twenty-eight. So we wouldn't lose, it's what we would report, we have to, the days that will drive the the uh the calculation of ADA.
Yeah.
This is another thing, um, we had, you know, five hundred and eight faculty and staff members eligible to vote. Three hundred and sixty-eight responded. That's a big number. You know, I, as a board member, I don't wanna go against the majority. The majority spoke. They said what, they have, they have both calendars, right?
Yes.
I mean, they know what they were voting for.
But but were they told calendar B without the nine-week grading period? I mean, I guess the grading period really doesn't affect the days off, though, right?
Correct.
Cause it impact, but it does impact the short grading period that you would have, right?
Yes.
But that just means we have to adjust the grading guidelines.
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, you had, you know, two hundred people vote for this calendar. They gotta live with it. I mean, that, I mean, what I'm saying is they gotta live with, they want it. So I wanna trust that our our people at TM know exactly what they were voting for and and if that's the majority vote, I'm gonna go with, you know.
Actually, there was two votes.
Yeah, there's two votes.
For, well, um, I mean, two times that, we had to do a recount.
Change it.
We we don't go back to two thousand. Put out and there was a miscalculation on the number of workdays. It was one eighty-five instead of one eighty-seven, correct?
It was something minor.
So so then.
We had a wrong triangle somewhere.
So so then we had to go back and start the voting over.
But they still voted for calendar B both times.
It had no impact on the results. The results ended up being the exact same.
See, most of the majority, which is Ben's correct, the majority voted for the six weeks, which was fifty-four percent of the respondents.
Exactly.
And the uh three sixty-eight, which is for statistical analysis of five hundred and eight faculty members, that's a good percentage of people that cast ballots or votes for it. And the two hundred, which was fifty-four point three percent of the respondents chose it. And then the others, you know, it's just, you know, there's a statistical error in there, but still. It's it's a good point to make because that was one of the ones I was gonna make because the fact that for a survey of five hundred and eight people, three hundred and sixty-eight responded, that's.
Has this been done before where the employees get to vote?
Yes.
Yes, they do. They've done it every year except last year.
So they've done it every year. They're used to that.
Last year they did it.
Yes.
Even last year they did it?
They did, except last year, the teachers did not collaborate. The two calendars were given to them by a superintendent. Said, vote on these. These are the two options.
The way they've described it to me is it was just.
Well, I've been clear, I voted on two of these before. I didn't get to see where the teacher, the percentage is.
Yeah, this is actually nice to be able to see.
Yeah, so I didn't get to see who voted or how many voted or what. So this is nice, you know. For a for a trustee, it's nice because, you know, like I said, I'm gonna put my faith in the majority of the vote, so.
And there's also like maybe eighty who do not have emails who didn't get to vote. That's a custodial group.
Yeah.
Sure. They have emails. Everything we do is by, by paper to them. It's a very high number that responded.
Hi, Denny. Yeah, I'm good with the calendar. Uh, I'm okay also just already using one of the weather days for the seven seventeen as the first day, like you were saying.
I I wanna do that.
Yeah.
I just don't want, oh, there's another thing. Look at graduation. Yeah.
Which calendar B?
B, okay.
Graduation, graduation, uh, we won't lose ADA under this graduation. Now, having said that, and Mr. Alvarado's gonna hear this from me, if this is adopted, I'm okay with the seniors doing team-building stuff that week, as long as you're okay. If they wanna have barbecues, if they wanna do what, you know, to build some, you know, it's the last, but um, I'd like to keep.
They can do it at campus.
I'd like to keep them in school.
I agree with that shot time. I agree with them staying in school because that's a lot of money we're we're giving.
Yeah.
You know.
Janie, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir. And that's similar to what we've done in the past, that last week uh for the seniors, there was always an activity going on so that so that they would come to school. It it worked.
It it doesn't have to be a full date for them, right? It's always a snapshot, ten o'clock.
That's correct. Technically, four hours.
Okay.
They can eat barbecues, hamburgers and chips for four hours.
It's it's not meant to punish them.
No, and and it's, I think, I think a lot of the senior parents and stuff like that would love to get involved if if it's gonna be outside because it's, I mean, or wherever, you could get senior parents involved and we'll make sure, I'll make sure my senior, you know.
Well, it also.
Because it benefits them.
We have a really hard problem trying to fit senior stuff in, senior awards, everything else. This is a whole other week to to play with, you know. So we were being raised to the senior trip last year. So now we can have it during that week instead of the week before.
Yep, yeah, that's great.
That's another idea, yeah.
Just trying to let this spread out. I know you guys come to everything that in May, it seems like it never ends. Uh, so this gives us a week to spread things out, which is, we are more than happy to do. It's, it's crazy.
Paul, how, uh, Paul Mustela, how long has TM graduated their seniors early? Where they got out of school and?
I think pretty much every year.
It was like that when I was here.
Well, let let me bring up something, another consideration that won't be decided tonight, but I do want it to marinate with you. At the end of April, uh, we're gonna have a beautiful football stadium. We pay twenty-five thousand dollars to the American Bank Center to graduate there. I'd like for high school and and the board to start thinking about, do you wanna consider graduating at Warrior Stadium? And um have that uh for our kids and community. Twenty-five thousand dollars of savings, although there would be some expenses for for that. Um, but um, yes.
How long is our current contract with the American Bank Center?
It's two years left.
Two years left? Okay. Can we cancel it?
I don't know.
I'm sure there's a bio.
Philip.
I didn't know we were at that fault. They try to go as far as they can.
To hold it.
This year, next year, and that's it. Two years. So this is two graduations left.
Yeah, it there's, yeah. Plus the fact that if we had it in our stadium to accommodate as many parents as possible, you have to have up to two nights.
Now, we can seat, I think, seventy-five hundred.
We're gonna.
Two nights because of COVID.
We have to separate.
Yeah, because there's still, but there's still not enough room because American Bank Center holds many more than what our stadium can. You'll have to limit to the number of people.
Well, what we can do, Paul, we can count this year. We can get some data.
Yes.
Yeah, what we can, we can get, we can get data on how many come this year. Cause I don't know if you've collected that attendance, but there's ways we can do that. And then we can match it with our uh capacity and go from there.
All right, let's bring it back to the academic calendar.
Yes.
I guess I had my list of stuff. If y'all had anything else. You're good?
On the calendar, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, are there any, I guess, contracts that are more than one eighty-seven days?
I believe we're okay with paying them those days.
Yeah, I'm at two twenty-two.
No, yes, two twenty, yeah, yeah. I wanted to know who are above the one.
Patrick said two.
Forty.
Two forty.
Oh, give me a second.
They have different numbers.
We have some teachers that.
My teachers.
That's one eighty-seven is in general.
Yeah. Uh, I guess, can y'all give me that data? Okay.
HR can give you.
That'd be awesome. Um, the March intercession, I know y'all said it aligned with CCISD. Does that also align with Coastal Bend College in Temuk?
Our intercessions won't.
The March.
No, like any of the intercessions and the, but the intercessions in the, in the fall, their teachers are gonna have to come. That's their, that's the expectation, if you want to be part of the program. Whether it's the spring break for Temuk or uh A&amp;M Corpus, those sometimes are in different timeframes. And uh, you know, it's, we got three different colleges we're working with, uh, two.
Depending on their college.
You might not buy.
They either get off or they have to come.
A&amp;M Kings, A&amp;M Corpus.
And so I guess expectation during those, this is almost not even calendar related, but they they show up for the buses, daring intercession to go.
We will run those.
Okay, sweet. Um, yeah, I was gonna say, I like I want us to start doing our calendars sooner, maybe approving in December or even January. I feel like February's too late in the year to approve a calendar.
I agree.
Uh, but I I like what y'all brought up on the a two or multiple-year calendar uh to help not only staff, but also parents. Love all the data associated with this and collaborativeness of everything that went into it. And you saw how data worked, how you can have these hard discussions, but then you bring it back to the data, who voted for what. I do like uh Ariaga's previous suggestion of a four-day school week. Uh, was that mentioned in any of the discussions?
That has, we've kept it around.
Okay, uh, I'm a very strong advocate for work-life balance. And I believe four-day school weeks can bring that to uh our district. Uh, article came out yesterday that said forty-two Texas school districts have already moved to a four-day school week. Seventeen of them in East Texas, fifteen in North Texas, seven in the Panhandle, two in West Texas, and one in South Texas. I think TM could be number two.
What size are they?
I could get you that information.
Cause that would have a lot to do with it. I think our district's too big to go to, to go to a four-day.
I think, I am, I'm, I might be wrong with this, but I I read that article. I think those school districts that went to a four-day, a four-day uh school week are smaller school districts. That that may be wrong, but I think that.
There's some that are, cause where I got the ideas from Athens, when we went to that basketball tournament, they're our district, they're our size, they're there.
I will get you all the data, uh, but most of them are rural suburb school districts in order to attract teacher talent to have that work-life balance.
Mr. Benavides, if you wanna look up a four, a four-day district with a four-day work week calendar, Terrell ISD, North Texas, is the same size. Jasper too, same size, if not bigger.
Those schools are.
They, Jasper's already been on this year.
You'd have to kiss your round goodbye.
Yeah. Good luck.
Yeah.
It would be year-round, but it would look very different.
Yeah, start earlier, go longer.
It's not even longer, cause we're already above the seventy-six, five-hundred minutes.
That's not enough days to cover the four that, if you go to a four-day week.
It's gonna go by minutes, you have longer days, right?
Something to.
Some of them would be, not all.
Yeah.
Well, I think a benefit also would be for us to look at nine weeks instead of six-week grading periods.
But yeah, just that's out there. Filler for next year. Uh, and I'm good.
All right. Any other discussion? No? All right, do we have a recommendation?
Madam President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approves the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Tulsa Midway ISD academic calendar as presented.
I'll make a motion for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Paul Mustela and a second by Ben Benavides. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, now we'll go to agenda item number six, discuss and consider approval of agreement for opinion research for decision-making agreements.
Madam President, members of the board, if you'll recall from the bond workshop that we had, I don't know when we had it, last month, I brought to you a couple of initiatives uh that I would like to move forward with. This is one of the two prior to even considering a November bond. This would be a scientific study of the TM community, what they think about the board, what they think about the superintendent, what they think about a multiple array of issues. The expenditure would be in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars. That money is not budgeted. It would be funded either through at the end of the budgetary, the fiscal year, their savings because not all um functions are spent at a hundred percent. Or it would be uh paid for out of an end-of-year budget amendment. But um, I believe I told you in the bond workshop that I was gonna bring this for your consideration. There's a, there's a timeline. It would begin in April. And then there would be a board presentation um on the findings. Um, the data would not be sold. And um, I think if we, if we are entertaining an opportunity to um ask the voters to go in debt, I think we need, I think this is a prerequisite.
It's a good idea and they do have a good track record with those districts that have had failed bars in the past.
Yes, sir.
Database.
Soldier, when you said data, you said, so you said data and soldiers.
My first line was, data is valuable. Yeah, we're about four thousand of voting households in the Tulsa Midway District that hold seven thousand voters. Uh, the survey is for uh five thousand mailers, so there's a, we're like forty-two hundred. One hundred and fifty phone calls, unlimited web, uh, with an expected response of around three hundred. I believe we'll definitely get more on the website, web side of things than they're predicting for us. But at their prediction, that's four percent of our population. In their synopsis there, they said that they were gonna wait their results to fit the demographics of the last. their results to fit the demographics of the last November election. I didn't necessarily agree with that, because the demographics from November twenty-twenty-two are gonna look extremely different from the demographics of November twenty-twenty-three. That was my only con with it. But yes, definitely prerequisite. I heard the American Bank Center money was gonna pay for it all, so.
But I think it's a small, but wise investment.
Because it's hopefully guiding the people that saw fit not to vote for it this time, to vote for it because of the fact that it deals with their students and children and security of those children.
I would.
I think it'll help us also more with the bond election. I, I'd like to know where people think we do things well and where we don't.
Didn't come back to you.
What was the last sentence you said?
About the security of our, of our students. Because it deals with all the students.
I know this will definitely educate, get the education out there on the bond so that everybody can make a educated decision when it's time.
Are we gonna pay the extra for the Spanish? Or is that included in your?
I'd like to.
Is that included in the price? Well, I saw where it's an extra thirty-four hundred dollars.
I think its money will spend. I don't, I don't wanna exclude.
It has to be in Spanish. Has to be in both.
Has to be.
If, if we could get a, a sample of the deliverables we would be receiving, I would greatly appreciate that.
I agree with that, I'd like to see it, too. I'd like to see their Spanish version of it.
Yeah, because I, I wanna know if I could filter, like, okay, these are over sixty-five that are tied to, like, the school district in some way, and these are over sixty-five that, or, this is just the population that has no ties to Tulsa Midway. I wanna really dive into the data to understand where we need to focus our campaign efforts.
I, I don't think that objective is, is if you vote to approve it, secure the contract, and then have a Zoom with the gentleman, and he can, you know, I don't, I don't have the skill set to go down that road.
Well, they're actually, this is what they do, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're the ones who have the knowledge. They've had the past experience, and it turned out very positive.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure what they're providing the district is user-friendly to the district to continue to use it to our advantage, yeah.
Yeah.
Not just a blanket.
Yeah. Something that's gonna be unique for our community and our voters in our area.
Custom fit.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? All right, do we have a recommendation?
Madam President, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approves the services agreement with Basilice and Associates as presented.
You have a motion? Paul Ariaga makes the motion.
I'll second.
And Leo is the office. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Is this the first time TM has done it for a bond? Is this the first time TM's done?
We've had, several years back, they had some of our successful bonds. They had people come in, they set up different committees that worked with, and took essential people from the community, brought them together, and developed everything. And it worked out real well.
All right, agenda item number seven, discuss and consider approval of resolutions for A, approving the district investment policy and strategy, B, approving investment training and investment pool options, C, adopting authorized broker-dealer list.
Mr. Carroll? This item is one of those things that we're required to do every year. The district has an investment policy, but the Texas Investment Policy Laws say we have to re-adopt it every single year. And also approve, as investment officer, every district has to have an investment officer. Kathy in my office and myself, we're the designated investment officers. We have to go to training every year. And also, just as a, as a fail-safe, we say that we have the authorized broker-dealer list. Now, to preface that, the size of our district and the, we, we have a lot of funds, especially now that everybody pays their taxes. We're, we're swimming in money right now, and it'll be enough to get us through the end of the year. But I will tell you, we are not, the size of our district and the funds that we have available to invest, it's really not worth it to go through and look at other things like treasury notes and all the other things that you would use a broker-dealer. So even though I'm asking you to approve broker-dealers, we do not, I do not foresee using one, because we, all our money is in the investment pools, which are available to governmental, government units to invest their money. Because the banks, we have an agreement with the banks for our checking accounts, but it costs the banks money to keep, to keep that much. They have to collateralize anything above the FDIC limits, which is two hundred fifty thousand dollars per bank account. So, and the whole reason all this is in, is in effect is because of Orange County. And if you, if you Google Orange County investment situation, you'll, where government was investing in junk bonds, they were investing in questionable things. They lost a lot of money, so now governments will kind it up. We have specific rules about how we can invest our money. And once again, in the state of Texas, they require, use the board. I usually do it either every January or February. We just have to re-adopt our investment policy. We're not changing anything, it's exactly how it was last year. It's exactly the same, but they require us to re-adopt it every year. And then also approve the investment officer training and where we can get that training from. And then the broker-dealers, which I don't anticipate us needing, but it's there in case we do. Any other questions?
Oh, I've lost the internet. Chrissy?
Yes, this is so boring.
No, it's not that, but the resolutions are on the computer.
It's gone. I have a lot of questions. What's our yearly rate of return?
Well, the, we only invest in the pools. When I started thirteen years ago, the pools were paying like point zero-two, point zero-three. Now they're up to, I think they're four point five right now. But that's because the interest rates have gone back up, so the pools have gone up.
Wait, point zero-two? And now we're four oh-five?
You'll see, well, we do a quarterly investment report, and so that.
That was another one of my questions.
That has all that data on it.
I don't think I've.
I guess.
We haven't gotten the fourth quarter one.
Right.
When do we get that?
Uh, that should probably, that should be next month.
Next month, okay.
And you'll, it'll, it'll have the rate of return that we have. We do, we do get a little bit of interest on the checking accounts. It's not much, it's a floating, it's a floating rate, too.
Would that report have the performance of all the vehicles, investment vehicles, Philip?
Uh, it'll, it'll show what the pools are paying, yes. It details which pools we're invested in and what the average rate of return was for that month.
Not just ours, right? Not just the ones we're invested in, but the entire portfolio?
Uh, no, I, it, it's only, it only shows what we've invested in. Like, we, we, we've, we've, we invest in about five different investment pools, and it just shows just the ones that we're in.
That was my next question. So I, I saw we were in five pools. How many actually are there?
You mean in the state?
For Texas.
Uh, there's, I think there's about eight investment pools that are available to government units in the state.
Okay, and then, like, our rate of return compared to, like, other school districts in Texas? Where do we stack up?
We're exact, every, every district that, like, for instance, we, we have two funds that we, we go through, it's called Loan Star, for the, anyway, everybody that invests in that makes the same. In other words, it's, it's for the whole state. Tech Pool, the, the rates, the whole state gets the same rate. I mean, if you invest in it, that's what you get. Right, and I can tell you, all the pools, they have different, there's different types of pools depending upon the, the instruments that make up the pools. And so I guess some of them do offer a little bit more, because they're considered a little bit riskier, because they have, I think the big difference is the ones that include commercial paper. Those, those pay a little bit more, because commercial paper is, could be a higher risk of that.
And did our investment strategy or pool percentages change, like, post-two thousand nineteen? As we went through COVID? Or we're very long-haul, low-risk?
Uh, the thing about the pools are, they're also, they're dollar-for-dollar. It's, if we put, if I put five million dollars in there today, I can take the five million dollars out tomorrow. It's not a, it's not like a CD where it's gotta sit and mature. It's dollar-for-dollar. It's, it's almost just like a regular checking account, it just earns a little bit more money. And there is risk, the pool, the pools, they're not guaranteed. They are an investment.
They. Are.
Do you want to give you a breakdown as to how, what percentage is equities? Or what is the bonds?
Yes, yes, there's a.
Cash equivalents, things like that?
Yes, every, every, every pool has that information.
But this is about our investment strategy.
And you, and you'll provide that information to us?
I, I can, I mean, I don't normally include it in the investment report, the investment, the quarterly investment report, but I can't make it available to you.
I'm assuming in order to qualify for that governmental pool, it has to be relatively conservative?
Yes, it has to meet, the state has strict requirements. Those, those pools that are authorized for governments in the state of Texas to use, they have to meet the requirements of the state of Texas. I, we would not be allowed to invest in it if they didn't meet those criteria, yes.
And then, my last question was, I saw that there was six different strategies that we could prioritize per the funds we have. I just, we didn't pick yields for any of them. All of them were basically, don't lose money.
That's the rule of a government. We're not, yields are nice, but we're not, we're, it's not our money. Yield is, for governments, yield is not the top, it's never the top strategy.
No other school district has it, has it?
I will tell you that larger school districts that have way more funds to invest and have way more staff, they have the, they have the ability to maybe purchase T-bills and other instruments that, that are, that are layered and structured. But I can tell you, with district our size, I don't have the, I don't have the manpower to do that, because you have to stay on top of that, and then a district, a district our size.
That's where you go with the broker-dealer.
Well, but they gotta take their feet, and so when you take their costs, it doesn't really, their costs would offset any additional yield that they might generate for us, their cost would.
Due to our size?
Yeah.
Okay. Those are my questions. Wait. Yeah, those are my questions.
So it's, it's pretty standard. We just have to re-adopt the existing investment policy. And we approve our training, the way we get our training. And just to cover if we ever did need a broker-dealer, which I don't.
Any other discussion? All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the.
So, but we will get the quarterly report, which we haven't, have not received in the next meeting. Because I, I've been here since November now, and I haven't seen.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have not done.
A third, a third or a fourth, so.
Uh, no, we're only, we.
Or, did you give the fourth in October?
No, the, the quarters go, let's see, September, October, November. That should have been in December. I'll have to double-check where we are on that.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolutions. Resolution A, adopting the district investment policy and strategy, whereas the Public Funds Investment Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter two-two-five-six, governs school districts' investment, and whereas the Public Fund Investment Act, Section two-two-five-six dot zero-zero-five-A, requires the district to review and adopt the district investment policy and investment strategies not less than annually for funds under their control. And whereas the Public Fund Investment Act, Section two-two-five-six dot zero-zero-five-E, requires the board to adopt that investment policy and investment strategies by written rule, order, ordinance, or resolution, recording any changes made thereto. And whereas, the board has chosen to make no changes to the current policy and strategy. Now therefore be it resolved that this district has complied with the requirements of the Public Funds Investment Act and the investment policy and strategy is hereby adopted as the investment policy. No changes have been made to the policy during this review. Passed, adopted, and approved by the Board of Tulsa Midway ISD this thirteenth day of February two thousand twenty-three. Now I'll read. B, approving investment training and investment pool options. Whereas the Public Fund Investment Act, Government Code two-two-five-six, requires the all-designated district investment officers to receive ten hours of investment training every two fiscal years, supported by the district. And whereas, the Tulsa Midway ISD chooses to utilize investment training courses sponsored by the following entities. Coastal Bend, Tasbo, Tasby, Tasa, First Public LLC Austin, UNT, Patterson and Associates Austin. Whereas the Tulsa Midway ISD approves the participation in the following investment pools. First Public Loan and Star Investment Pool, MBIA Incorporated, Texas Class Investment Pool, Texas Local Government Investment Pool, Tech Pool, Texas Term Logic. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Tulsa Midway ISD that the district has complied with the requirements of the Public Funds Investment Act and the district investment policy to approve investment training sources and investment pool options. Passed, adopted, and approved by the Board of Trustees ISD this the thirteenth day of February two thousand twenty-three. And C, adopting authorized broker slash dealer list. Whereas the Public Funds Investment Act, Government Code, Chapter two-two-five-six, governs local government investment. And whereas, the Public Fund Investment Act, Section two-two-five-six dot zero-two-five, requires the board no less than annually to review and adopt a list of qualified brokers slash dealers authorized to engage in investment transactions with the district. And whereas, banks represent depository relationships and are not broker slash dealer firms, they are not included on the broker slash dealer list. And whereas, investment pools must be approved by a specific board resolution, they are not included on the broker slash dealer list. And whereas, the following list of brokers slash dealers is recommended for approval. SAMCO, Stifle Nicholas, Hilltop Securities. Now therefore be it resolved that the district has complied with the requirements of the Public Funds Investment Act, and the list of authorized brokers slash dealers is hereby adopted. Before transacting business with any broker slash dealer or pool and bank, each will be sent a copy of the district's investment policy for written certification of their review in accordance with the act. Major changes to the policy will require broker slash dealer recertification. Passed. will require broker slash dealer recertification. Passed, adopted, and approved by the Board of Tulsa Midway ISD this the 13th day of February 2022. This needs to be corrected.
Just the weekend one, correct?
Yeah.
We can...
Address that motion already.
I, I made an amendment to remove the last one. Senate.
Make a motion.
What's due?
I like it.
We need to have a motion for the amendment.
Fix it.
I'll make that motion.
You make the motion?
I'll second it. This is for the approval of all three, correct?
Well, let me make the, um, resul, let me make the motion.
Yes.
It is the administration's recommendation the Board of Trustees approves the attached resolution, adopting the district investment policy and investment training and investment pool options and the authorized broker dealer list.
Can, can I make one comment before the motion, or is it before the...
I've already made the motion.
Okay.
He's made the resolution.
He made the motion.
They made the motion.
And you second it?
Yes.
All those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Now I just want to comment on the topic before the motion, so.
All right. Agenda item number eight, discuss attorney firm for the Board of Trustees. This is just...
Madam President, this was a, and members of the board, this was a requested item that I have no comment on.
I brought this up, I think, I feel that we as a board, the past two years that I've been on the board, uh, we had the option as a board to have a different, uh, board attorney. Although we were using the same Wash Caigos, uh, the superintendent was dealing with Elizabeth Neely, and the board was dealing with Mr. Resendez on several issues. And it just, I, I feel that, uh, although I have not talked to Mr., Mr. Cruz, I've talked to him one time in passing, uh, I just feel that the board should be allowed to have its own attorney. So if there is ever a difference of opinion between the superintendent and the board, we have our own consulting attorney that can address the board issues. That's why I brought that up.
Well, the, the board attorneys work, work for the board. So Juan Cruz works for us. And...
Well, I understand what Juan Cruz does. What I, well, Juan Cruz has, uh, has come to us through Mr. Van Maitre and all his present, uh, he's worked with him at Cintin...
No.
Okay, uh, Freer, Fremont, and now, uh, TM ISD. And I just feel that there needs to be a little separation sometimes for legal advice on certain issues. Maybe it hasn't come up yet, but it might. And therefore, we should be open to the suggestion of having our own board. I understand that we employ Mr. Cruz, but he has his relationship with Mr. Van Maitre. He deals more with Mr. Van Maitre. I have not seen him, uh, or maybe I was absent, but I haven't seen him at one of our board meetings addressing the board.
Well, he was supposed to do our governance training, but we had, not everybody could attend. So you would have seen him at that meeting, which he will be doing that this month.
Yeah.
He was here, uh, and we can pull that and made a presentation to the board.
Well, I'd love to hear that, because I, I won't even...
Can you pull that?
Plus he had one of his, uh, associates.
No, no, you're right. I was here, but she, she was, there was an AD associate at there.
Valeri. Oh, Valeri. Valeri Reyes.
So, once again, I just wanted to bring that up. I feel that we should have our own attorney that we can go to as a board, but, you know, that's, that's my view on it.
Well, just, just to be saying something is that, as a team of eight, having a, a single representative to support us in any legal action is very conducive. Now, having buying forces, if there were something to come up, that would be a unique situation where the board could opt to select another law firm. And going through that to pick a law firm, to be judicious about it and everything, you would have to interview at least three reputable school attorney firms and go through that process of selecting. And then it'd be another, um, I don't know, everything, everything, different people use different things. Anna, don't you use one firm for all your employment stuff?
I used what the district uses. So when we were using Wash Caigos, I would work with...
Special Ed uses Beaker.
Special Ed uses Beaker.
Special Ed uses Beaker. Beaker, I've been using them for years. There are special Ed attorneys. But to keep the team of eight working together with the same attorney or law firm would be in the best interest of us instead of having two separate things that could get convoluted at a time whenever something, where we're trying to get an answer for all of us.
By getting the situation resolved.
Well, just to, just to refer to what Mr. Masuda is saying, uh, when we hired Juan Cruz, I didn't know that, you know, because I asked this question. I didn't know we weren't gonna use Wash Caigos anymore. So we wouldn't have to, from my understanding, uh, you're saying we have to pick three. I didn't know we weren't gonna use Wash Caigos at all anymore. So, I mean, and, or at least I wasn't told that, that, hey, you know what, we were hiring Juan Cruz. Because I did ask that question when we brought up Juan Cruz. And, uh, but we weren't saying, hey, you know what, we're, we're gonna, we're firing or not using or anything about Wash Caigos. So I wasn't, I didn't know that that option had gone away. So apparently, we're not using Wash Caigos for anything because we would have to go out and look for attorneys. I thought we still had Wash Caigos on the, on the, on retainer or something. I didn't know we weren't using them at all. That wasn't brought to my attention. As a trustee, I, you would think that you'd wanna know those kind of things.
I haven't severed any relationship with any law firm.
So then we wouldn't have to go look for three, because then we should be able to
I'm not, I'm not familiar what relationship you had previously with that.
We were using Wash Caigos. When you got here, we were using Wash Caigos. You knew that. I mean...
I knew that an attorney, uh, gave me about five minutes because she had another school district that I, I perceived to be more important, um, in my dialogue with that attorney. But I don't even recall what firm she was with. I know her name, but I don't know what firm she was with. She didn't give me that amount of time.
Yeah, I was wondering how many, uh, law offices we already have currently on retainer? And then, to, I, again, I just re-watched, like, all the board meetings, right, like, last month? And, uh, when he brought Juan Cruz up, uh, it was as an addition to whatever current services we have.
Exactly.
Wait, listen, listen. Uh, then at that time, uh, who I replaced suggested, oh, I don't wanna be paying double retainers, remove, uh, Wash Caigos, can we look into that? Um, and then it wasn't brought up in any other meetings post the initial discussion. Um, but yeah, and then I was just curious, um, how much money we spent, uh, over the past five years on average, um, on legal fees.
A lot, uh, but I, I don't know how much. And how many, Phillip, uh, we don't have a retainer with Juan Cruz.
Yeah, we, we don't, um, we have a retainer with Beaker for Special Ed. And, uh, but we do not have a retainer for Wash Caigos unless, uh, the only retainer is, uh, Anna, I don't know if she still does it, but Anna had a small retainer for personnel issues.
Wash Caigos would offer the district $1,000. And if I emailed them and they had to do a lot of research, or called them and they don't have to do the research, they know it, it was free to a school district for $1,000. And Mr. Cora's office paid it last year, so I don't know when they paid it.
I can tell you right now.
I think it's probably still active. If I needed them, I could call them.
But that is the only, that's the only retainer we had with Wash Caigos. Everything else was as, as used. They were, they were built as used. And that's what we have with Juan Cruz. It's as we use them, we're building. And the, and the retainer with Beaker, it's a, it's the same way unless we have a, it covers everything unless we have a lawsuit or something that's above and beyond just regular things. It's just a cost to that if we have a lawsuit.
I, I haven't had any issues with Juan Cruz. I haven't had a whole lot of dealings with Juan Cruz because we haven't needed to have any, um, dealings with him. Um, but, I mean, you don't need him till you need him, right?
Well, I've had questions with Juan Cruz, but I was told I couldn't get to him or I couldn't talk to him.
That's BDD local.
So that's, that's...
But those questions can still be asked through me. It's not like the questions can't be asked.
Yeah, well, well, okay, just to get, the board president is the board president when there's a quorum. Other than that, we're all trustees. Therefore, I think that I have the right to speak to an attorney if I have a certain question that I want answered. Here tonight, you're the board president. I understand that if we had a legal question, we could, you know, call him and you could ask him, whatever. Any other day, once we step out of this, this room, we're all trustees. And I would like to be able to ask a question to our attorney like I was able to for the past year and a half until, uh, Juan Cruz became our attorney. I was able to talk to Wash Caigos and ask him my questions. And they would reply to me. But now I can't.
Well, but that's, that, that, that was breaking policy, the board, I mean...
I, I requested the policy and, and I was never given that policy.
Can you put up BDD local?
Yeah. When I requested it in your office, I, that was more than...
It was given to you. Uh, but let's look at it again.
When was it?
And let's look at when it was adopted. I don't have that date in front of me.
Exactly. Because I didn't...
Let's look, let's look at BDD local.
When was that adopted?
The 2019.
Also, it wouldn't be in the best interest of our community and taxpayers to allow anybody to call up the lawyers whenever they want to. We could run up a bill that we don't even have money budgeted for that.
I wasn't trusted by the community to, to represent them. So, I mean, it's not just a community member. I mean, I wasn't trusted by them to be able to do, to ask questions in their interest. So, you know.
Which can be done through the, through the president. And the president can contact the lawyer and the information can be given back to the trustee.
There's, there's your policy. Now, Mr. Benavides, you do as a board have the ability to change that policy because that's local policy.
And that was adopted in 2019, you said?
Mm-hmm. June, June four.
It's on the corner right now. On the left corner. Six four, 2019.
The retainer with Wash Caigos is actually gonna come up again soon. It was signed in March of 2022. So it is $1,000.
$1,000?
For the year.
For a whole year?
For a year, yes.
And that's just basic questions?
Basic questions. On anything. Usually we ask personnel, simple things.
And I'll, I'll bring that back to the board for approval. I have no problem with it.
He would, when you ask your question, he would tell you if that's covered or not covered?
No, he just, at that time?
Yeah, like, like when you called him before and you're like, oh, I have X question. He'd be like, oh, that's covered under the retainer.
Very minimal, uh, legal advice on, on the $1,000 retainment.
Yes. I would just make it real quick. I have one little question. They'd answer it. It was free.
Is there any other discussion?
Uh, when, when you bring it, uh, can, can we get that average of how much we've spent over the past five years on the fees?
Phillip, can you?
And then...
Well, that's gonna be a little different because we had the...
That's an easy, well, I can, actually, how much we paid each firm would take a little bit, but...
I don't really need firm. I just legal.
Has a unique, uh, account number, so I can, I can get that.
But a lot had happened with the past two years, Denise. It probably won't happen.
Ten, ten years is fine as well. I just...
That might ever...
So how many times do you think you called the attorney, Ben, for questions?
I don't remember. I don't remember. Well, what I'm saying a lot was because we went through the Fernandez stuff that required a lot of attorneys.
Right.
So that's why I'm saying the time came in. Not my questions, I don't think, you know, added up to, you know, 15, 20 minutes at the most throughout the whole two years. But, you know, we went through a lot of, uh, legal advice and stuff because of the, the Fernandez.
That's gonna skew it quite a bit.
Exactly. So I don't think you can get a good average on it, but, you know, unless that happens frequently.
Here's some TASB information on, um, because this was just up for discussion, um, about school districts' attorneys, just so everybody can read it. This actually was the information, um, that Juan Cruz sent for all of us to have. Which speaks volumes for him, uh, educating us on what TASB says.
Well, he's getting paid for it, isn't he?
So we don't have a secondary firm that we consult with, even if Juan Cruz says, yeah, that's the way to go. We don't go for second opinion. We just take Juan Cruz and run.
I'd generally go with his opinion.
TASB does, if I may say, TASB does have a legal department that you can ask, and that's free.
Yes.
But usually it takes them a little while to get back to you, maybe like five or six hours. You had to call, leave your question. They'll do the research, and then they'll respond.
I know Joe Poole pretty good. Called him over in the past.
That's free.
TASB is good about, like you said, they do, don't respond right away, but they will get back to you and they will tell you.
Right.
The legal aspects.
That is correct.
Sometimes give you too many options.
That's awesome. It's awesome.
Yeah.
So in this last, in this last paragraph here, you know, he talks about, uh, maybe it's at the last paragraph, but on this page here, he says, "The board may retain counsel specifically to represent the board in its interest." So they supplement, something like that. So what you're asking for, Ben, just so I'm sure, is somebody that would represent the board, because we have Cruz, who's, uh, the district's attorney.
That's correct. And it's, it's exactly for what you were saying, is, you know, you, you get a second opinion on a lot of things, you know, we're, I mean, I know the guy is probably a great guy, you know, uh, but, you know, sometimes it's good to have a second opinion about stuff. And we as a board should, you know, be able to do that.
Like I said, we got TASB, that's for one thing, which is free.
Well, TASB is gonna give you their side of it because, you know, if it was all TASB, why do we have local policy? We were just gonna go with TASB's opinion on stuff. You know, we still have TASB opinions on things, but we still do our local policy.
TASB won't represent you.
Well, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
They can give you an opinion, that's what... They can give you an opinion, that's what they do, but still have the Beeklers, because they have done other things than special aid for us in the past. And of course, Wash Gallegos is still available, so there are other options than having to go out and procure another person. Keeping everyone together, the team of eight.
Right.
Is the important thing.
And right through on the page that you were looking at and you're communicating with your attorney, I don't know what page that is, if you count from the back, it's one, two, three, and four. And it's the highlighted area where it said, who is the school attorney's client? The second sentence, a school district's attorney represents the district as an entity, not any single person associated with the district. The Board of Trustees acting as a body corporate governs the district. Consequently, the attorney owes an ethical obligation to the district, not to any individual board member, board officer, or employee, including the superintendent.
Exactly. They have fiduciary responsibility.
I go back to, I think this was written in a perfect world. I think in the last three or four years, this district has not been a perfect world until you have a board member that's got some concerns of transparency, not, not targeted at you in, in any way, I don't think. But, you know, there's, there's some baggage there, whatever you want to call it, that, that we gotta get that trust back for everybody. And yes, we're working great as a team of eight right now. I think, I've had nothing but good things to say, but anyways, I just think that it's worth thinking about, I think, you know.
Apparently the car using Cruz and not Wash Gallegos.
Um, go ahead, Denise.
If, I don't know where it can live, but if we had, I guess, a list of who's been procured and approved through this, like, through people and the team board at one point said, oh, yeah, these people, uh, I don't know, I feel like this almost could have been avoided had we known, oh, the retainer is still ongoing and stuff, so.
And I think we have lawyers that are on retainer fees that could be a second opinion if we needed a second opinion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
At a time, because we've got different, different groups.
Yeah.
Well, we have Wash Gallegos.
We've got Wash Gallegos and, uh.
Bill Beekler's are special need attorneys, I don't know how.
They, they, they helped us with other things.
Bill Beekler is personnel.
And personnel.
Yeah, specializes in special, but Bill is personnel.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with him.
Yeah, just a, a list of who we have, I guess. In the refinery, you call it like MSA agreements? I don't know what it's called, like, school-wise, but. The approved list of contractors.
On retainers. So y'all would like a list of who we have on retainer for?
I, I don't need a list, I mean, I don't need a list, but then she wants a list, but, I mean, I know it's Wash Gallegos and, and Beekler, unless we have more than that? That's, you know.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying.
And Juan Cruz.
I would, I would like to see that list, yes, however, I believe it should be some type of living document that a board ten years from now could easily say, oh, this is who we got. These are contractors. Yeah.
We have probably worked on that during our.
Philip, a list of law firms that we've used in the last number of years with what we spent?
Yeah, and then, and then it could be, uh, and maybe this is getting into policy, right? But then it could be like, oh, we've used this lawyer in the last ten years, however, like, maybe we've all recycled through, so it needs to be reapproved every three years, what our list is, or whatever.
Now, we can talk about that when we do our workshop for policies. Is there any other discussion? No more questions? All right, agenda item number, number nine, discuss the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three scheduled phone call with Texas Education Agency. Well, as I was driving or about to drive over here, I saw that that meeting for tomorrow has been canceled and in the process of rescheduling it. And that was TEA, they were unable to, to get on the phone call tomorrow. But I have decided that, um, board president and board vice president will be the two on the phone call, on the, on the Zoom call when it takes place. I wish I could give you more information than that, but I don't have a date now because it's, it's been changed.
Isn't it Friday? It, um, they propose nine in U.S. for nine thirty, but we haven't heard anything?
Yes, that's where it's at right now. I can try to get a confirmation.
Am I on the call?
Yes.
And I gave you, uh, Mr. Cruz had sent over, it looks like a history.
Oh, did you give me that, Chrissy?
Uh, it's in a Manella folder. Yes.
So that's closed session?
Yeah, I can't look at that right now.
You said it was closed session.
I, I initially thought this item was in closed session, but it's not, it doesn't mean the exception.
So I have another question on that, on the TA phone call. You, you said you made that decision.
I did. We can't have a quorum on a Zoom phone call, we would have to post to a meeting.
People that I proposed that you put three people on, there is not a quorum.
I understand that.
So why can't there be a, a third person on there just to, uh, maybe the understanding would be better, whatever the transparency definitely would be better. I mean, but, I mean, our board president cannot make those decisions outside this, this, uh, when you're in quorum. You don't have that authority to say, I made that decision. I mean, you know, or show me, once again, show me the policy for, you can make that decision because that's not what, that's not something you can decide on your own without the approval of the board. That's outside your, your, that's outside your duties. I mean, you know, I'm not going to make a big thing about it, you, you know, I'm happy with Ariaga being on there, that's fine with me, but just so that we understand that that's not something you can call. You can't make those decisions for the board.
I think what would be pertinent would be when we have the, uh, training on the twenty-seventh for the attorney to give some specificity, what guidelines that the board president has. I know, I know for a fact that in sixteen years as being a superintendent, I would interact with the president of the board on a regular basis.
No problem with that. The fact that the board president cannot make decisions outside of this quorum on, by themselves, whether, or he or she cannot make those kind of decisions.
I would say policy decisions, you're right, but I don't know if this was a policy decision.
Well, you know, I mean, that, you know, that, that's still just, like I said, I don't have a problem with that issue because I, I'm happy with who's going to be on the phone call, but my thing is, we have to have an understanding, the community needs to have an understanding that the board president has authority when there's a quorum. When there's not a quorum, when we walk out these doors, we're all board trustees. Do I respect her as a board president? Yes, I know she's our board president, and she's going to sign paperwork outside of here and stuff like that, that has been approved by the majority of the board, whether it's, you know, four to three or whatever, seven, zero, I understand that, and I give her that. But to come in and say, you know what, I am going to do this, I, I'm going to do this, that's not what a board president should do. You know, that's not within your, your powers to do.
I'm going to agree that it, the comment was overreached, uh, but I think in our, when we do our board operating procedures, we can all align together what we expect the board to do and duties moving forward. Perhaps it is when there are phone calls with outside agencies, top providing officers are on the call for X, yeah, but that, this discussion is a VOP discussion in my head. Board operating procedures. Sorry.
So.
Call the board? No.
Unofficially.
But like you said, we can discuss that in our, you know, and get a clarification, clarity on what the duties are of a board president also, in here and, and outside the doors.
No problem with that.
I don't need it.
But there's lots of meetings that have to be attended and there's lots of phone calls that have to be done.
Sure.
To represent the board.
That's correct. And that's why if you're a board president, you, you know, you want to take that on as a, just like we're all volunteers, you can volunteer to do that, you don't have to do that, you know, but that's what, you know, if, but that doesn't mean you're going to come in and just state it like that, you know, as, you know.
Okay, well, I apologize for stating it that way, I take that back, but a decision had to be made and the meeting was tomorrow. You wanted transparency, you wanted someone that wasn't on the board, I gave you that. Wasn't that our phone call?
That was our phone call, but we hadn't agreed on three people.
And.
And now you changed it, so, no, we didn't agree on the whole thing, we agreed on three people.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I get it, but she's asking a question.
Agreeing on something without the whole board, you're just talking about the whole board, and y'all making.
Exactly.
No.
Exactly, but it was two board trustees, we can talk, with, with among two board trustees can talk to each other.
It's, it's under the same guise as what you're saying, it's.
Yes, both, both were in the wrong, yes.
Yeah, yeah, y'all were, yeah, so, can we move on?
Sure.
Yes. Or, everyone's cool, Kim and Ariaga on the phone call.
I don't have a problem with that. Paul, are you available Friday morning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have the Zoom, then, are the Zoom links going to be the same?
Can I just say something? Would, would you agree that that would be in the best interest of the team of eight to have a new board person sit? Kim, I mean, do you, do you take offense to that?
No, not at all.
Mr. Van Major.
Not at all.
Do you understand the reasoning of that?
Yes.
Because, you know, our prior, uh, board meeting, you said that perhaps the TEA investigation was a reason that the bond failed.
Yes.
So if this is, uh, you know, this is lingering over our head, we certainly don't want to limit that phone call to.
In no means do I want to represent myself as limiting.
No, 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 and, and I'm just saying, I, I certainly want to make clear that this isn't a, an adversarial, it's just, I think it's in the best interest of us as a group, and it's in the best interest of the community, wouldn't you agree?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I want to, I want to put it behind us.
Exactly, all of us would like to do that.
Not more than us, some of us on here.
All right. Any more questions, discussion, comments? All right. Discuss and consider approval of consent agenda informational items. Number one, check payment register. Number two, tax collection report. Number three, enrollment report. And number four, regular and special call board amendments. Are there any questions over any of that? Go ahead, Denise.
Excel format, any, ever?
I follow, between the audit and everything, I just haven't had a chance.
Well, well, hold, hold on, Ms. Villalobos, didn't you, uh, in the conversation, um, in Kathy's office, didn't you run it once, or she ran it once, and no one could figure out what it even looked like?
The one, the first one that I ran, you did not dump into Excel where it was, you wouldn't be able to do anything with it, and, and I haven't gone back to look at, there are several other reports that I, there are some reports that I'd never run, but I, I haven't had time to go back and look and see if they would offer anything, if they would, if they convert to Excel any better than the one that I, that I did.
Even just a, like a backend query, and I could put it into a database to.
It doesn't work that way, because we're not, this program is not, we're hosted, so the data is the data, and if I dump it into Excel, it, the one that I did, it doesn't line anything up, like, you can't, like, sort it, you can't, I mean, you could do Control F if you were looking for a word, but you wouldn't be able to, like, do anything with it because all the columns are, they go wonky and the word wrap and everything is, is, uh, it, it just, it just doesn't go to Excel. And, but I said, I only looked at that one report.
I didn't want you to think that he's just blowing you off, because I do know that they tried to run it, and I, I remember that conversation, because I'd asked.
So I went line by, and I go line by line every single time, and it's really annoying, and I write like a million questions, and then I'm demotivated by not having Excel, so I don't even ask them, but, uh, Apollo towing, uh, four other different buses this time than we had last month. They're just like, everything sad in the bus department?
It is, our, our fleet is aging, and the, uh, the newer buses don't last as long, uh, the, the new DF crystallizes, and we, we found out in COVID, and it's not just us, uh, that the DF crystallizes, and it, the sensors fail. A number of districts, diesel exhaust fluid, it's a emissions requirement.
Yeah, I just. I just, uh, I think Ariaga made the suggestion, or, or, very early on, on, have we ever looked into third partying transportation? And I, and just, and seeing this every single time, it sucks.
Let's go down that road.
Yeah.
Because I'm very, I have a big appetite, third party.
Yes.
We've, we've met, actually, we have one meeting or two meetings? Two meetings, um, there's a cost analysis that, because they've given us a, a number, they take over our fleet, they take over the bus routes, uh, Philip's working on crunching the numbers for that. My hesitancy is this district has done this before.
Yeah.
Durham.
And it, and it wasn't successful.
It was Durham.
Uh-huh, so I, I don't want to.
I don't have that background information, I would love.
I don't want to be impulsive with a recommendation.
Yeah.
Till I gather all that, but, but my previous two districts, that's all I knew, and I really loved it. Now, the only hiccup we had, our girls went to the regional finals in a San Diego ISD bus, and we weren't San Diego ISD. That got me in a lot of hot water with my parents.
You just got to buy some magnetic, gas so midway?
Yeah.
But okay.
But we are, we are looking at that, yes.
That's good.
Next question was, what are the two different budgetary units under, oh, Jake Cruz Associates?
It could either be, there's legal under the board, there's legal under the superintendent, there's legal under, uh.
So it's different personnel reaching out?
Yeah, depending on the issue, all three departments have a legal budget, so it just depends, I think on, we divide the, the bill, if it's a, if it's a personnel issue, we, we charge it to Anna's budget, if it's, if it's a district-wide one, we do to the board, if it's something that we're working on, like with the superintendent. It's really.
I borrow Kim's.
It's really only that way, just for budgetary purposes, it's really all, it could all be in one, in one account.
All right, I had a question on the Laverne and Kishnik charging us for an audit that was like five months back, but you just said you went through one, so that's a recent charge?
We're, we're getting ready to, next Monday, we'll have, we'll have the audit for the twenty-two year, their, their billing is, that, their billing is as they work on that audit, which is going to be presented next Monday.
Okay, I was just.
What firm do you use?
Laverne and Kishnik.
He'll, he'll do a letter of engagement, uh, two or three months from now, that'll give the, I'm assuming that's what.
Yes.
The, the total cost, what is it, twenty-five thousand?
No, I, I was just worried because the date on this had August of two thousand twenty-two, so I didn't know if our, like, payables were behind.
That may have been when you did the letter of engagement, but I don't remember. I don't think you did it since I've been.
Because everything else is within the thirty-day window. Because everything else is within the 30-day window, this was the only outlier. So I didn't know.
I'm not sure why the, the date's like that, but, um, we, we, I usually do the letter of engagement like in June, May or June.
Yeah, I don't remember, see, he must have done it in May.
He must have done it in May.
And then, uh, we spent like 10 grand in reactive stance to ransomware? What, what are proactive stance?
I, I don't have a clue what you're talking about. I know that we had ransomware.
When we had, when we had the cyber attacks, we had, uh, the insurance. So part of the way the claim worked was, our insurance company refers us to these third companies, third parties that helped us protect our data and do everything. And I'm not even familiar with everything that we, they did. But then, it's kind of ridiculous, but we have to pay those third parties and then we have to file a claim back to our insurance company because we had a hundred thousand dollar, uh, policy with a thousand dollar deductible. We've already paid our deductible. So we have to pay all these third party, then we get 99, if it goes up to, if it goes over a hundred thousand, which it has not, then we have to turn around and ask for up to the 99,000 back. So we have checks that are written to these third parties, but we get, we're going to get all that money back up to our hundred thousand dollar limit, minus our thousand dollar limit.
Yeah, I just want to bring attention to the more that it costs money to be reactive to incidences. Next question was, um, are re, is it a true refueling strategy to always do like the opposite product every other month? So like December was 17,000 diesel, then 5,000 unleaded, and then the next month it was flopped, uh, 2,000 diesel, 20,000 unleaded?
It's whatever we need in our tanks and I optimize. A, a delivery truck with 7,200 gallons, so any combination for the 7,200, so I get the most out of the truck.
They have two compartments, that's, that's pretty cool. Yeah, I'm good.
I have a question. In the, in the month of October through, I guess, November, we spent $41,000 or $42,000 with Juan Cruz. I mean, do you have a reason why it was so much in those two months? I mean, was there stuff with the fuel or, or? Do you know what it was?
You, you want to help me with that?
I'm, I'm going to say, it was more grievances.
We've got an EEOC, I don't know if it's that, but it's.
We're still, we're still.
There's one for 24,000 and there's, that was a big one, uh, in, from November to, the month of November.
I would say most of it would have been personnel.
What the two accounts mean. Whose account is this one and whose account is that one?
I'm sorry?
I would think majority of that.
We also had the discrimination suits at primary school. We did a big investigation on.
Well, we get 42,000. It's my only question.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
Okay, it is the administration's recommendation that the Board approves the consent agenda as presented.
I will make that motion, the consent agenda as presented.
Ms. Bealobos makes the motion, do we have a second?
I got it.
Leo opens all those seconds, is it? All those in favor? All opposed? carries seven, zero. All right. The Board will convene in closed meeting as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act to discuss items allowed by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, dot 071, dash, dot 076, dot 082, dot 0821, dot 083, dot 084. We will now go into closed session, the time is 10:15 PM.
Do you have a recommendation?
All right, it's February 13th, 2023, it's 11:39 PM and we have reconvened from closed, closed session. Do we have any action?
Madam President, members of the Board, I recommend the administrative contracts as presented.
I will make that motion, the administrative contracts as presented.
I'll make second that.
All right, we have Paul leave a motion and Ben to second it. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Uh, Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees issue a non-Chapter 21 contract for the remainder of the 2223 school year to Mr. Alfonso Chavez.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ben makes the motion.
I'll second it.
And then our last order of business is, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees accept the resignation of Ms.
Asusena?
Asusena Chapa.
Does that fall under the same motion? We need to make another motion.
I'll second.
There you go, Leo.
Leo, that is.
We're in competition here.
Give us, give us a buzz.
All right, that motion was made by Ben and seconded by Leo. All those in favor for the non-Chapter 21 and the resignation? Motion carries seven, zero.
That's all we have.
Superintendent.
Oh, um, I make a recommendation that the Board accept the Superintendent formative evaluation instrument and evaluation.
Sum, summative, formative.
Formative.
Formative, formative evaluation as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Here's summative. I mean, formative.
His formative evaluation that we did. Got it. So this motion is for his formative evaluation.
I'll make that motion.
Ben, Ben already made the motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. I'm just a little tired.
Well, as you notice, as it gets closer to midnight.
Okay, Superintendent formative evaluation. Ben made the motion and Paul Mustello seconded it. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Do we have any other business?
We do not, just a reminder, we will, uh, tentatively, we're meeting at five?
Yes, the earlier the better.
I have, uh, I wanted to see, we can make the motion to put on the agenda, uh, on the graduation caps for next Monday, to decorate the graduations.
Add an, add an agenda.
Add an agenda.
You don't have to, it's a secretary, I don't have to.
Oh, make it open.
Once we officially got it.
All right, if there's no other business, um, is there anybody that would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Who's going to second it?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, now let's order.
It is 11:43 PM, February 13th, 2023, this meeting is adjourned.